Thank you.
I would like to call this regular meeting of the Carefree Town Council to order Tuesday, December 7, 2021. Please excuse the momentary technical delays here. We've had a number of meetings today on Zoom and who knows. I would like to wish all of you our warmest happy holidays. We're coming into the season and just looking out the window at the sky, it's starting to look a bit like a wintry sky. Calling this meeting to order, Candace, would you please do a roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Give me just a minute, please. Tony Geiger.
Here.
Steve Hatcher. Steven Hatcher, thank you. Gerald Croyer.
Here.
Mike Johnson. Mike Johnson.
Yeah, Candace, Mike's not gonna be able to make it tonight.
Okay, thank you for letting me know. Thank you. Vince Delicio.
I'm here.
Hi, Vince.
Hi.
John Crane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Crane, thank you. Mayor Peterson.
Yes. Okay, we have six of seven present, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to go to the consent agenda. We're gonna hold on item number one for right now and go to items two and three, acceptance number two into the public record of the November 2021 paid bills. These are all of the bills that the town paid during that month. And item number three, acceptance of the cash receipts and disbursements report for September of 2021. Do any of the council members have questions or comments? Hearing none, I would accept the motion to approve items number two and three.
I move we approve items two and three.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Candace, would you please do the roll for acceptance or rejection of items two and three?
Here we go. My apologies. Councilmember Geiger, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatcher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Croyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Crane, how do you vote?
Aye.
I apologize. Councilmember Delicio, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson, how do you vote?
Aye.
That's a vote of six to zero, one absent.
Okay, thank you. So items two and three pass. And my apologies, let me just drop back for a moment, which was omitted when I went ahead to the consent agenda, the pledge of allegiance. John, would you please lead us in the pledge, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Pledge allegiance.
We're not.
Flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Next item is item number four, call to the public. I'd like to make a statement from the town regarding public comment during the call to the public. An opportunity will be provided to members of the public to provide public comment through written submissions to council members or Candace on any topic of concern or interest to them during call to the public. A member of the public wishing to submit a written comment must do so through the Carefree website candace@carefree.org. For comment to be read, it must be received by noon on the day of the council meeting. Any comments submitted after that time may not be read until the next council meeting. A member of the public may submit only one written submission for council meeting and cannot exceed one half of a page, double spaced, in a minimum of 12-point type. Once three minutes have expired, the person will be requested to conclude their comments or the reading of their letter. During and following the call to the public, members of the council are prohibited by state statute from answering or responding in any manner to a comment, except in response to personal criticism or a false statement. Topics raised at the call to the public that have not been published in the agenda cannot be discussed or considered by the council due to a lack of prior notice to the public. When one or more members of the council believe that a comment merits further review and discussion, then they refer to the town staff for further investigation. Staff will investigate the matter and report back to the council when the investigation is completed. Public comment during the time when a topic is on the agenda or under consideration. We do have, I believe Candace, one submission which was today, which could have been during call to the public or read during an appropriate time on the agenda. And I think the decision is made that more appropriately goes when it was apropos to the item on the agenda. But during that time, when a topic is on the agenda, if a member of the public wishes to speak during the time when a specific topic on the agenda is under consideration, please use the raise hand feature on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Public comment raised during the time when a specific agenda item is under consideration must pertain to that agenda item only. Any comment on a topic on the agenda not under discussion at that time will not be permitted. A comment cannot exceed three minutes in length. But Candace, do we have any submissions under call to the public?
Mayor, at this time, I have no submissions under call to the public. I will have one for agenda item eight.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none, going on to item number five. Do any of the council members have any current events which they, or other news which they would like to share with other council members and residents of Carefree and others?
Mayor, if I may, I would like to say that the Hanukkah lighting each of the eight nights was well received. We got a lot of great feedback. The live stream went really well, but more importantly, it was well attended and it promises to be a much bigger festival next year. And thanks in large part to the efforts of our economic development director who is doubling as the organizer of the event. So way to go, Steve.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Vince. Anything else? Hearing none, would like to go on to item number six, presentation by Les Hardy regarding the Wheels and Wings event in April of 2022. And I would like to, before we ask Les to speak, that we will handle the street closure permit application. We have a meeting scheduled for one week from this evening. So we'll address the street closure at that time. But Mr. Hardy, if you would like to tell us a bit about this, I know this has been run before very successfully, and we're anxious to hear about it.
Well, thank you, Mayor Peterson and Vice Mayor Crane and members of the council. In large part because of your help and assistance and cooperation and enthusiasm, two years ago, a group of us put on a wonderful Wheels and Wings car and airplane show at Sky Ranch Airport. We've been held back last year, but we're gonna do it again. We're now doing it in cooperation with Sky Ranch Airport. It's their 60th anniversary. They're having an open house and we're doing our Wheels and Wings show in conjunction with them. Last time, you helped out tremendously by closing off, coning off portions of Cave Creek Road and also providing signage and other technical assistance, which I'm hoping you'll be able to provide again. Other than that, we think it's gonna be an even better show than we put on last time. We're encouraging everybody to come out. Again, it will be free to the public. This time, it will be a little later in the morning. It'll be, the gates for the public will open at 10:00 in the morning and the show will run till 2:00 in the afternoon. We expect to have many more airplanes than we had last time because of the open house for Sky Ranch. We'll try and squeeze in as many cars as we reasonably can. Again, it's a classic and vintage car show, cars 1980 and older. And I want to point out that Councilmember Delicio's beautiful Alfa Romeo, is it a Geletta? I'm not sure what it is, but I think maybe it's a Geletta, will be there in the Italian section. So.
It's a Spider, Spider. It's a 79 Spider.
Okay, well, it's gonna get in there because it's the 1980. But we, I have to tell you, we deeply, deeply appreciate all of the assistance and help and cooperation that we get from the town. It really makes our job so much easier. And we're very excited along with Sky Ranch to put on this great free event for the people of Sky Ranch, of Carefree. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. We look forward to that. Going on to item number seven, review, discussion, and possible action to approve resolution 2021-12, updating the multi-jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan. And I believe that our code enforcement officer, Mr. Dennis Randolph, is going to take us through that.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Crane, and Council. Like to move to resolution 2021-12, rescinding the 2015 hazardous mitigation plan and approving the 2021 multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan.
Would you tell us a bit about that, please?
I've quick points of this plan. It's quite extensive. Has updated community development trends for the town of Carefree, reassessment of natural hazards that impact the town of Carefree, updated town of Carefree mitigation strategy, completed comprehensive risk assessment to include community vulnerability, and completed two rounds of public outreach.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to further clarify, every five years, the county goes through this process. So this is just a continuum of that process to update every community is part of this within the metropolitan area. And they go through this process to update the plan. So collectively, this has gone on for the past year and not much has changed in Carefree. So there are not any significant changes, but what you typically see in the changes are what Dennis has indicated in his list. But not much has changed with this plan at this point in time.
And I believe this is put together by the 27 municipalities and Indian tribes within Maricopa County. Virtually all of them, 23 or 24 of them, signed this, and this is a collective effort. So are there any questions or comments from council members?
I have a question. So with the approval of this resolution, Gary, will we incur any costs, have to buy any hardware for the, for our fire department or?
No, no, we do not. We participate in this plan. There's a fee associated with this, which is not something that we choose, but something that is required. So there is an annual fee that we do pay into the system and it's based on per capita. So we are part of that system and part of this planning process, but there's no direct fees to the town of Carefree beyond that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions and comments?
I have a question, Mayor, if I may. Is this strictly related to with the fire department?
No, this is for the entire town. So it deals with partnership with citizens and government.
Is that your question, Councilman Hatcher, or was it what areas does this address?
Yeah, I mean, I get the impression it's strictly from, I did. Fire issue, how do we address evacuation of town? Or is there other aspects of this that we need to share with the community?
It's all the above, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. It deals with multiple dimensions, whether it's be a natural disaster, disaster or man-made event. It contemplates a lot of different scenarios and it's a regional planning approach to evacuate and deal with those respective emergencies. Some of that information is obviously not disclosed to the public. So there is some sensitive information there to protect members of the public while they're evacuating and secure resources. So there's multiple dimensions to this plan.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from council members? I would accept the motion to approve our participating in this for the next five-year period and signing the appropriate contract.
Make a motion to approve the resolution 2021-12.
Second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Candace, would you please poll the council?
Yes, thank you. Tony Geiger, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatcher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Croyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mike Johnson is absent. Vince Delicio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Crane, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson, how do you vote?
Aye.
That's six to zero.
Okay, thank you. So 2021-12.
Let me call you back in about 45 minutes.
Okay, item number eight, review, discussion, and possible action to consider approval of resolution 2021-17 for a major general plan amendment of approximately 21 acres from very low density residential, DLDR, the special planning area, abbreviated SPA, to allow for a future hospitality use with a possible ancillary retail. The property is generally located at and adjacent to the northwest corner of Carefree Highway and Tom Darlington Drive. I know this has been something which is in the initial forming documents of the town. It has been over the last six years, something which has been discussed throughout town meetings and with planning and zoning, joint council planning and zoning. And I would ask our Director of Planning, Stacy Bridge-Dentak, to take us through this, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and members of the public. Thank you for your time this evening. As the mayor has introduced, this is a major general plan amendment now going forward to mayor and town council for its public hearing for an action on that item. With that said, I'm going to sort of just give a brief presentation of sort of how the application fits with sort of the zoning and planning and zoning criteria, the general plan amendment criteria, and how it goes through the process with the planning and zoning departments. Gary and Steve will supplement with follow-up presentations then. And I presume then we'll take questions once all those presentations have transpired. But with that said, you know, our general plan, and you've probably heard this many times before, it's the blueprint for growth for our town, for many towns in Arizona. And it is a legally amended or amendable document. And there are procedures for amending it that are described within the document itself. Do you want me to admit that personally? And so as part of this process, we're here to evaluate if such a change is warranted just based on the information that is going to be presented and discussed this evening. With that said, I'm good. Okay. With that said, just to give a little bit of context.
I got it.
If you just joined in, if you could mute, that would be great. So with that said, these are the five parcels under the amendment request. This was a request by our Economic Development Department with the consent of the owner. Looking at the physical constraints of the property, you can see that Carefree Highway, which is also part of the city of Scottsdale, to the south. To the east is Tom Darlington Drive, also the city of Scottsdale. Both of those right-ofways are actually right-ofways that belong to the city of Scottsdale, even Tom Darlington in that location. To the north is Langwood Lane, which is in the town of Carefree, and that is a Carefree right-ofway. And then you can also see there's developed properties to the west, which are town of Carefree properties. With the terms of the context and uses surrounding it, again, starting at the south, the city of Scottsdale, which really surrounds these parcels on its south and east sides, are made up of essentially non-residential uses. You've got the Terravita Marketplace to the south, which is a shopping center across its street, a little further to across Scottsdale Road. To the east is El Pedregal, also non-residential. Continuing north, we've got the Presbyterian Church. Just north of that is an important feature, I think, known as the Boulder Stack. And just beyond that, to the north again, is still city of Scottsdale and the Boulder Board itself. As you're in the Carefree jurisdictional boundaries, really what surrounds the property to the west are existing residential lots, and those residential lots are zoned for two-acre development. This is both a map amendment and a new, we're creating a new planning areas the mayor had described. So it's a map amendment and a text amendment. What I think is important to point out, as you can see, existing wise, the original land use was very low density residential, which allowed for those two-acre lots. But what we're creating, what the request is asking is to create this special planning area similar to what you see on the northeast corner of Cave Creek Road and Carefree Highway. In fact, that land use as a special planning area was integrated into the town's general plan at that time. So we've got two similar corners with two similar dynamics in terms of their surrounding uses. And these surrounding, these properties have more been impacted by surrounding growth than so much what has been going on within the town itself. This is the land use designation. Steve will go into more detail during his presentation, but things that I wanted to point out with some language, as you saw in your reports, is that we're looking to establish in this amendment, it's important to be sure that there are goals and objectives that you see in our general plan itself, that those are met. And you can see that by, for example, the language for establishing adequate buffers to very low density residential. We'll get to the next slide and see those specific goals and objectives in a moment. But that language, as well as preserving natural washes, preserving natural features, that's all things that you'll find are important in terms of the general plan itself. Utilizing high-quality architectural character, massing in height and density to minimize disturbance, again, tying into goals and objectives, both in land use and in open space, which are elements of our general plan. Lastly, also, we talk about incorporating the natural snore and desert landscape. All of these goals and objectives are considered values in the town, and that's what we look for when we are looking at land use or making any kind of amendment to our general plan. But what I think you'll see most of all is that, and probably Steve will go into detail about, is that it's a very tight and very prescriptive land use because it's setting up a framework for a very specific expectation as this would move forward to the next step with the development and a rezon application. So as I alluded to, there's general plan goals. There were goals in the land use element that were, that we see are met in terms of this amendment, for example, encouraging the transitions of less intense to more intense land uses. In this case, again, we're responding to what growth has impacted us versus the town itself implementing land use and new land use development. We've also talked about maintaining and enhancing unique character of the community. That land use talked about how we would look to develop or future development would look in terms of architecture and quality. Also, this development would help encourage redevelopment that would eventually support town center, taking potential visitors and bodies up in the town center itself. And also, again, those open space goals that talked about promoting preservation of floodplains and washes, as well as buffering the nearby neighboring community. In this, in this process, public participation requirements have been met, if not exceeded. We have, again, I keep referring to Stephen, he's at the end of the table here, we'll probably go into detail because I think it's really important to describe how robust of a public process this has been. Typically, one neighborhood meeting will be required, two were held. There are multiple discussions throughout the whole timing of when the application was submitted in March to tonight. There were six open house meetings added due to the fact that we had our public hearing with planning and zoning via Zoom as well as this public hearing. I think the hope was it would be in person, but we wanted to make sure that there was that interaction and everybody had a chance to be vocal and attend a public open house. The required 60-day public agency review was sent out. No comments were received from any of those recipients. We constantly updated the website with current information. And most importantly, all the hearing notifications and public requirements were met under the state statute for amending the general plan. So in summary, from a planning perspective, the major general plan amendment does constitute an overall improvement to the town central plan. From again, as from a planning perspective, with no intended adverse impacts, the amendment is in conformance with goals, objectives, and policies as outlined in your report and has gone through in this presentation, as well as all citizen participation and public hearing notification requirements have been met. There is a last slide that has a proposed motion, but we can wait on that just to support or to help out at the end of this discussion. So, thank you. And yes, and so being a major public, major general plan amendment, it does require a super majority vote, which means two-thirds of the council have to, if they choose to approve it, requires that number of votes. Hey, thank you.
All right, bear with me, I'm gonna change the slides here. All right, can everybody see that new slide?
Yeah.
Yes, all right. So I'm gonna make a little preamble here and then I'm gonna pass the baton on to Steve. Carefree, I've been with Carefree for 20 years. I wrote a general plan. I wrote the zoning ordinance. I wrote the subdivision ordinance. I wrote design guidelines for the community to educate people on good design. I wrote a mountainside ordinance and I've written many budget documents, including our past budget documents. So I think I know a little bit or two about the town of Carefree. In addition, I spent many years with the city of Scottsdale and understood the origins of Carefree. So I come with a significant background about what Carefree is and what Carefree was. And Carefree continues to be a conservatively managed community, always has been and continues that. In doing so, Carefree provides core municipal services in the most cost-effective manner. Our annual town budget outlines in detail the cost to provide services and revenues to support these core municipal services. And I encourage the residents online tonight to review the budget document from last year. We went to a program-based budget that includes an extensive narrative of how the town funds are invested. In the past, it was just a line item budget. Now there's detail behind the numbers. It speaks of how those funds that we receive on an annual basis are expended. And it's an important document to understand, and it outlines many of the conversation points that we're gonna have tonight with economic developments. So it's a very, very important document. You can find it on our website at carefree.org, under budget. Under Budget and Finance, or please just email me and I'll send you a PDF copy. Uh, my email address is gary@carefree.org. I'll be pleased to send you a copy. And also, we have an open door policy. You have questions, please come on in. We're always available to meet with any resident, anybody who has questions. One of the indelible imprints, if you review this budget document, is the importance of local sales tax to support the town provided services. Whereas in other communities, there's a local property tax, which is typical to help support the fixed costs of operations and or the variable cost of capital investments. Since Carefree has been and continues to be reliant upon sales tax revenue, similar to an investment portfolio, it's important to seek balance to insulate the portfolio from negative cycles. In the case of Carefree, over the past financially audited ten fiscal years, sales tax revenues average around three million dollars. Sorry about that, not moving ahead with the slides here. So this uh top uh line chart shows the the evolving sales tax dollars and you can see the various cycles within the economy. Started with the uh, the great recession and uh we are in those COVID years and we've been very lucky in that we had uh, hardware and 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 groceries, things that people sought during that that pandemic. Um, so our sales tax had has been up as a result. So we we have to look at, you know, the evolution of of this sales tax and anticipate the the cycles and balance our 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 expenditures over the course of of the fiscal year. And I often use a a stool as an example when uh we we talked about how we uh reconcile or balance the weight of our core services over our two legged stool, that being mostly sales tax, but we have something else called state shared revenue, which is a smaller portion of the overall revenue into the town. So we essentially have one leg that we try and balance the weight of our core sort of services. And that's why we are a nimble organization. That's why we only have sixteen staff members. That's why I'm so proud about uh the staff that is dedicated to serve uh this community uh and has done so very well over the course of many, many years. Uh, we have one of the smallest staffs within the state of Arizona, so uh we all should be very proud of the service that is provided uh through our our core uh municipal services and staff. The pie chart below illustrates the contributors to the sales tax over the past ten fiscal years. And there's a uh piece of that that uh pie, if you will, uh that says construction on it. Please note that up to approximately twenty percent, one fifth of our revenue is one time revenue, and that's construction sales tax. That's here today, gone tomorrow. So when there's a new home or a a a new uh a building being constructed, they pay about three percent uh or three percent uh on that uh construction traffic. Uh, uh, construction contract uh in in sales tax. Um, that goes to the town, but that's not something that that is maintained in perpetuity. That's a one time revenue. That will go away as this community reaches build out and we're almost there. There's not many par- uh properties that will be developed, so uh for the most part, we are a residential community. We're not changing that. This is gonna be maintained as a residential community. Um, but there's few residences and few properties that can be be developed in the future. So that constructions uh sales tax will diminish over time. The biggest portion of that pie is retail, that's that uh one sliver at the bottom of that pie chart. That's approximately thirty five percent over the last ten years. That's what the average has been. And the largest contributors are obviously, and I think we can all guess, the big boxes in town. And we've also have read, many of us in the local newspapers um and national news about our local grocery store being purchased by a grocer out of California. What's the plans of that grocer? We don't know, but these are decisions made in the private sector. We also heard CBS Pharmacy is looking at closing and consolidating possibly approximately nine hundred stores. What's the impact on Carefree? So these are things that we have to take into consideration. It's our fiduciary duty to evaluate these things and the trends that will impact us. Additionally, about twenty percent of the revenue was typically attributed to accommodations to restaurants or hospitality uses. This is typical of one of the largest drivers to the region and the state economy, tourism. Which is why the town's economic development initiatives speak of improving the town's hospitality position within the marketplace by finding complementing pieces. We're not trying to change the fabric of who we are. We're trying to complement who we are. Economic development is about building value. Carefree's economy was designed to bring visitors into the community by flying them into Sky Ranch Airport. Having them enjoy a stay at the Carefree Resort, perhaps play around the golf at the Desert Forest Golf Course. Provide nearby shopping within our town center and the small businesses that anchor our town center, and perhaps sell them a lot. As the community has matured, some of these uses were privatized such as the airport and the golf course. The golf course had a reciprocal agreement with the resort so that they can provide a golfing experience to many of their guests that they're trying, they were trying to attract, attract and and move out here. Additionally, public streets and supporting infrastructure were expanded, which all contributed to the cost to operate the town. Today, as the community reaches build out, the annual cost to maintain the aging assets and address additional services requested by the next generation of Carefree residents continue to rise. With the expanded costs of the town, it's placed in a fiduciary role to look at opportunities to diversify its small tax producing portfolio and find complementing pieces. It's important to note that the die has already been cast to the fabric of Carefree. There is no desire to change the residential character of Carefree. Instead, instead, to find complementing pieces that provide a more balanced revenue stream to support the critical core services that the town provides. At a high level, the comparative purposes, for comparative purposes, for every million dollars of sales tax revenue brought into the town, it's in lieu of a four to five hundred dollar property tax on residential property within Carefree. So that shows the value of economic development and what the town council is trying to do with uh the economic development initiatives. So Steve is about to go into more detail and do a deeper dive in the proposed uh general plan amendment and why we're looking at it and and what we are trying to do to ensure that it is compatible with the community and the surrounding residential neighborhoods. With that, I'll pass the baton on to Steve, who will make his respective remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Nice, Mayor and Council. Um, it's been a long road and uh, this is something we started about at least fourteen months ago, and for me, it probably started about sixteen or seventeen months ago. Uh, when I first started with the town and was tasked, when we had this conversation regarding the budget about how we can solve future revenue gaps uh for the town and, you know, that also goes along with the idea that not only do we look at increasing costs, but the idea that we also have a community that's expecting more services, expecting more capital improvements. And so what I want to start with here is just kind of, you know, go back and say, you know, what we're looking at and the and the area that, you know, Stacy outlined. Um, during this presentation, you may hear conversations and even with um any of the comments and questions that might come up, because there's been extensive discussions with neighborhood. And we've kind of identified sites by numbers, uh, and so I just wanted to be able to outline what those numbered sites are. Uh, starting from the north and heading down south and in west is one, two, three, four and five, so the the prop- the the entire twenty one acres is broken up into five separate parcels owned by, all owned by the same ownership, and it's important to note um, that that ownership also owns lots around this cul-de-sac in this area as well. And this recent residential lot here. The other thing I'd like to, pardon, the other thing I'd like to point out is that there's a natural feature, and I'm doing this now because usually you can have a map that you show when you do a presentation live. But I don't have that map here, so I can't keep that up and and do the presentation at the same time. But there's a natural wash that runs through this site. It starts at Tom Darlington Drive. It runs uh west. And then it runs southward and southwest as it goes through the site, and that's kind of important to note as we go through and and I explain some of these things. Um, and and the touch points that it has with the existing residential and the commercial as well on on all sides. Um, I'm not gonna go too far back into the economic development goals, because I think Mr. Nice outlined those fairly uh extensively. Um, but just to say that, you know, part of what what we do when I was hired was that we wanted to work from from a work plan and that we wanted to make those work plans and the initiatives that we were gonna engage in, that we're gonna be part of the of of the public record. Back in the fall of last year, twenty twenty, uh, we held, the council held a visioning workshops and we talked about economic development goals as well as communication strategies and 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 planning strategies and a whole host of things that were making up the pillars of what really uh, are the foundation for for government here and and economic development being one of them. In December of last year, I presented the twenty four month business plan uh for economic development, which specifically talked about the rezoning of this site, and it was passed unanimously by council um twelve months ago. And again, you know, just kind of going through, you know, it really does come down to diversified revenue streams and just like, you know, most people in this community. You know, a lot of us or a lot of folks live on fixed incomes, there, there's a lot of retirees here, and when you look at your retirement portfolio, it's not made up of three or four stocks. You have a very diversified stream of income that you put together. Um, and 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 so what you want to do is make sure that you can ride the highs and the lows and 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 make sure that you have steady income. Um, because there's a lot of things that can impact that type of recurring revenue stream. And uh, and so that's exactly what we're trying to do here as a community, as best possible, or as administration, uh, as we grow and and all together. You know, when we do general plans and we look at these things and 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 while I have a twenty four month business plan, that fits in the context of looking at long term sustainability of a community and and while most of us aren't gonna be here in the next thirty years, there's a whole generation that needs to be here and taking care of it, and I've always been out of the belief that you you need to leave things uh better than you found them. And so that's one of the things that 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 we're trying to look at, and in all, when we look at the economic development goals about this site could generate somewhere between seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars in revenue. Um, this includes both direct and indirect revenue. Direct revenue would look at, you know, the actual bed taxes and the sales taxes on any ret- retail or restaurant that would be associated with the resort. And the indirect revenue would be from the the discretionary spending from the guests. Um, and what we do find is that when people stay in an area, they tend to spend a larger portion of their discretionary uh, spending while they're on vacation or when they're they're traveling in an area that's closer in proximity to where they're they're actually staying. Now, with all that said, in economic development, and I'm an economic development director, the town also has an obligation to making sure that the things that we don't do don't have negative impacts on those closest to the things that that we're we're trying to attempt. And so we thought it was extremely important that um we really gave ourselves a long uh runway to work with the the neighborhood. In particular, that neighborhood that is most impacted and uh within the five hundred foot range uh that's described within the 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 code for how we interact with neighborhoods. Um, and then uh, which mostly included folks who live on Wildaway and Langwood Lane surrounding the the site. Um. Just wanted to show, and one of the things that that Mr. Nice had mentioned is that this town is nearing build out and we don't have a lot of land uh available that could really suit or satisfy any potential potential future need for commercial development. And so what I'm outlining here are really the four opportunities that have been described and um that really were this is it for us. Um, and and maybe there's a a handful of smaller parcels here and there. Um, but this is the major opportunity. And so again, we're looking at, you know, as this town grows and we add more residents, you know, and looking at the overall mix of commercial to support residential and the services that we have, this is it. And and one of the things they always say is is you can't create land and we're landlocked, so uh, one of those sites, as Mr. Nice mentioned, is at the Carefree Highway and and Carefree uh, Cave Creek Road and Carefree Highway. Um, and that site has already been gone through the process of general plan and zoning. Um, and that site we definitely see is is looking at more of a neighborhood retail uh, to kind of fit in context with the other neighborhood retail that's within the area. Um, and the another site is the one that we're looking at now at Carefree Highway and Tom Darlington. Uh, originally, we had kind of looked at this site potentially as even having some neighborhood retail along with resort on it. Um, and and that was altered through the the process that we went through with the neighborhoods and with the community. Um, and originally, we we had tabbed that site for about nine hundred thousand to one point two million because of that, but because of the process we went to and just looking at, really focusing on low density resort for this site, we it lowered the expectation down to about seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars that would be generated for this particular site. The other location we have is the forty five acre state land parcel that sits just south of Sky Ranch Airport. Um, this is owned by the State Land Trust and uh, and and so um you know, there, we've, any, any applicant would have to go make application with the State Land Department to develop this particular site. And uh, and one of the, it was in the twenty four month business plan to take this through a general planning process as well. And one of the things that we're contemplating is is, you know, because this site is so large and and because it sits right here in the middle of the TMB. Um, and there's a lot of competing ideas for what this site could be. And because it may not have as much economic potential as the other sites that we're discussing have, just due to proximity and location. Um, looking at taking this through the general plan update process uh as part of that, that's gonna be coming up in the next year or so. Uh, and then the last area we have is the town center, and this is the original area that was uh, you know, uh, created when the town was created. Um, and and the idea here is is we have a lot of things happening. Uh, we recently created what's called a redevelopment area. And a redevelopment area will allow us to get access to tools um where we can really affect revitalization in the town center, and this is something that's been discussed in Carefree Master Plan since nineteen eighty eight. That we really need to focus on that and and really maximize our capability and the amount of revenue that we can generate um from town center. Uh, and as well as making town center and keeping it kind of what it is, and that is, you know, it's a, it's it's the heart and soul of of what was created when 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 Carefree was created. And it really is dominated by small local businesses. Most of those businesses operated by residents of Carefree. Um, and so we're gonna be going and we, just matter of fact, uh, we we hired Kim Lee Horn. And Kim Lee Horn is working on uh, uh, parking circulation and signage master plan study. And then they also have uh contracted with Michael Baker International, who did our original um uh town center master plan in two thousand and fifteen. And so they're gonna be working on the redevelopment plan process and over the next six to eight months, we're gonna be heavily engaged with the the community and with the neighbors and to go over all of these elements and seek input and uh, and then ultimately look to approve a a formalized redevelopment plan for Arizona state law. Um, which would have to go through a planning commission vote as well as a town council vote, so. What I want to show here is is that, you know, none of this that we do and the site that we're looking at was done ex- in a bubble, you know, or it was all done comprehensively. We were looking at how all of these things play together. Um, and and how we can best maximize and utilize what we have left, because honestly, once one of these sites is gone, they don't come back. And uh, uh, and we could hamstring, you know, ourselves and we can hamstring for future generations. What I want us to go through here, and there's also, this, this creates a lot of confusion, and I've seen a lot of confusion in some of the neighborhood sites where people were posting. Um, and it even with some of the emails I've received from folks that there is a difference between what's called the general plan and there's a difference between zoning. The general plan is the guiding principles of land use and the larger vision for a community. It's kind of the puzzle about how we want wanna be when we grow up and as we evolve. Um, zoning is the legal entitlement that allows the execution of that specific general plan. Both of these processes and require neighborhood engagement, posting, public hearings, planning and zoning approval or recommendations in town council approvals. Um, this is for a general plan amendment. And what I want to highlight here is is that whatever gets developed on this site has to go through the zoning process and has to go through a site plan process. And so what we looked at through this general plan process was the idea of taking something that is a general concept and 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 giving it as much focus as possible um as a general plan can. as a general plan can. And if you compare this to most general plans throughout, you know, communities throughout the state, they're usually just bubble diagrams of commercial here, residential here, this type of residential. This one really focuses on specific use. And and so you know, it is, and that's why we wanted to go with the special planning area, because it allowed us to be able to go through that type of of customization as we looked at the types of uses and give flexibility. One thing I want to point out also is is that when you go through a special planning area, it is considered under our commercial zoning standard. And so one of the things I've done, and when we've talked with the neighborhoods, is to make sure that when I go through this presentation, there are certain things that may not necessarily be included in the general plan document. But there's things that we've discussed, and there's promises that are made, and there's expectations that need to be set, that need to be put in the public record. And one of those things was we looked at zoning standards for this specific area, because height setbacks, buffering, all those things were all discussed and all things that that we took, you know, seriously and wanted to engage. And so in a commercial zoning, you can have a thirty foot height, fifteen foot front yard, twenty five foot rear yard, and ten foot side yard setbacks. In the current zoning rural seventy is twenty four foot height, sixty front and rear yard and thirty foot side yard setbacks. And so you can see those are all drastically different. When you look at the text amendment in number five and number six in the text amendment, I just want to make sure, you know, those are things in the areas where we address the intensity of development and the intensity of development as it relates to the the adjacency of those uses. So commercial next to commercial, residential next to residential. That, and this goes back to the 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 aerial that I showed you where that wash was. That the intention of this general plan and the future zoning is to be conscious of commercial standards inside the wash boundary. And that's that everything east and south of that wash boundary. And that the residential standards are outside that wash boundary and adjacent to the existing residential properties. I want this on the public record, because I promised the neighbors I would. And and I think it makes a lot of sense, especially when you're taking a use. And while we think this use fits in well with a neighborhood, and it's proven throughout, you know, the state of Arizona to be true, this use is coming in after it's an infill site to where existing residences are. So why our resort? Well, I mean, as Mr. Nice pointed out, this community pretty much started as a as a destination. Since it's nineteen sixty three, when I think it was the Desert Forest Inn in the Carefree Inn was created. There were only a handful, maybe hundreds of people that lived in Carefree at the time. And and honestly, it was considered, you know, the the idea was that this would be the next Palm Springs, you know, where somebody can come in, jet in, golf, stay, have a business meeting, and go grab some dinner in the little town center. As we look at commercial uses, resort use is pretty much one of the least intensive commercial uses. It doesn't have, you know, in and out traffic, like let's say a grocery store would have, or, you know, people come in and every twenty minutes, they're in and out. And so it's it's people who come in, they park their car, and for the most part, they'll probably maybe leave once or twice a day. If that, a lot of people even travel in by Uber. And then, one of the other things I want to note is is that, you know, this is an issue that was brought up consistently from from folks that maybe would necessarily live in the neighborhood, but in the surrounding area, and that's increases in traffic. And, you know, we understand that this is is an arterial intersection. And that the city of Scottsdale is going to be addressing this arterial intersection with improvements to widen Carefree Highway to address traffic concerns that are on Carefree Highway. But when you look at a resort use, and you look at the nature of how we're supported here, we're supported by visitors. And visitors come into this area, and they're coming here regardless, whether they're going to be staying in Scottsdale, or they're going to be staying in Phoenix, and they're in that this region. They're going to come visit. They're already creating the traffic. What we're suggesting here is is let's give the opportunity for us to be able to capture some of that revenue, create a nice environment, show people what Carefree really is, and create a really nice Carefree experience where people can come, stay, and go shop and support our local businesses in our town center. And and again, when you look at the types of businesses and you look at local businesses, you know, we're not dominated by Chipotle and Town Center and or or any of those kind of brand uses. It is truly a mom and pop environment. People that I know personally, and I respect the hard work they put in to run these types of businesses, and they are supported by the types of people that stay at resorts. And 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 that's the way it works. And so if we want to maintain that character, which I think everybody, when we look at the branding strategy for the town, that is something of a unique identifier that we want to maintain. And then we've also seen that resorts are proven to be successful when integrated into residential neighborhoods, especially high end residential neighborhoods. I mean, you don't have to look too far at, you know, True North, where there there's a Four Seasons and Paradise Valley, where housing values per square foot are the highest in the state. And that, and they almost all, many of them are adjacent directly to to resort uses. But one of the things I pointed out earlier in the original request, when we did this, was there was a neighborhood retail component. That neighborhood retail component was removed from this as we went through the process, and it was removed for two reasons. One, the neighborhood just said no, and that's not what they wanted. And that was a showstopper for them. But at the same time, I also was talking about this with other retailers in the area. And having more neighborhood retail at this specific location in close such close proximity to the Bashi Center probably would have had a negative impact on that Bashi Center and the tenants there. And we may have been just robbing Peter to pay Paul. So, you know, looking and reevaluating, you know, it really made sense to just stick with the resort type use, low density resort with just ancillary retail component. And this was initiated with the consent of the property owner, which is RPS LLC. And and again, it's special planning area, primary resort. In our P and Z meeting, and I haven't, this wasn't in my original presentation, but I added it in because this was something that was brought up. And so what I wanted to do was kind of give people an idea of kind of what the expectations are, even though we don't have a project in hand right now. And I'm not even talking to any specific developers at this time. Because again, this is more about setting the use expectations. So what I wanted to do was to say, okay, well, what is the anticipated impact? And what kind of room counts would it be looking at? And one of the the facilities that was brought up consistently of of what would be quality was Hermosa Inn as a casita style type development, which has forty eight rooms and it sits on six acres. When you extrapolate and do the math, the twenty one acre site, that's a hundred and sixty eight rooms. One of the things I pointed out, though, is is that this site that we're looking at has large natural wash, large floodplain, many rock, nat- natural features such as rock features, which could limit the overall net developable area on the site. And so, you know, kind of looking at it from the most minimal, you know, that would extrapolate to a hundred and forty five. So somewhere in between this one forty five to one sixty eight is probably where I would estimate that we would have a room count on a casita style type development. Again, looking at Savannah and doing the math based on, it's Savannah almost is exactly the same acreage on twenty one acres, has a hundred and seventy six rooms, a hundred and fifty if you if you take into the natural features. Another development I wanted to put in that's in a really high end neighborhood, you know, and it's a desert type development is Four Seasons True North. And it really, all these kind of start following in right around the same multipliers when you look at or the between the acreage and the number of rooms. So this kind of gives you an idea where that's going to fit in. And the last one I I looked at there was the JW Marriott. It's it's the big boy that's, you know, kind of really old Arizona. It's probably the most, you know, iconic casita style desert Arizona resort that I could think of. I got I got married there. And so I I have an affinity towards it. It's a beautiful place. And even extrapolating that down, it kind of fits into the same, you know, types of of size that it sits on the fifty five acres. And this one's a little more difficult to look at, because there's a golf course and a conference center and everything else. So one thing I want to point out is is when we start looking at the total comparison, when you look at the Hilton, when you look at Savannah, and you look at this site, if we were to develop all of those three properties, based on these numbers here, we still would be smaller than just one Camelback Inn. So when we talk about total intensity of development and how that impacts Carefree, we're not even going to be the size of one Camelback Inn, which sits in a community of Paradise Valley, which has many Camelback Inns. And so, you know, we feel, and I feel, this is an extremely responsible way for us to be able to diversify the types of hospitality uses that we do have between Savannah, Hilton, and hopefully some type of boutique hotel that really fits into the Black Mountain and Sonoran desert environment. And and if you add in the Boulders, obviously, the Boulders is, it's not in Carefree, but it is in the region. The Boulders does have two hundred and twenty five rooms. And I just wanted to point that out. This is the engagement process, and this does not include what I've already discussed when we went through the initial public meetings to discuss the creation of moving forward on this amendment through the plant, through the economic development planning process. But this really kind of sets where we kicked off the public engagement process by sending out the letters. We had two neighborhood meetings, which were well attended from the neighborhood. And then from there, we revised the amendment to include staff input. One thing I'd like to point out, and somewhere between this process here, when we had our neighborhood meetings, we did put amendments, and it was sent to the property owner who had the opportunity for thirty days to review it and to say, look, you know, the changes that the neighborhood made don't make sense. And so, you know, I'd like to opt out at this time. And the the owner was okay with the changes that were made as part of that amendment process. That amendment goes out to, in a review period, to the water companies, the local jurisdictions that are adjacent to us, Scottsdale and Phoenix, the sewer company, you know, anybody that would have a local jurisdiction or input as to providing services to the site. We finalized that text amendment and the map, and that went to Planning and Zoning Commission consideration. And then from there, you know, we we, and then again, all this was was certified or sent by certified notices and done in accordance. This was done through the planning department on how we published and and got to these hearings. We did have the Planning and Zoning Mission Hearing last month, and this was recommended for council approval. And then, we also had prior to that, six community open houses. Because one of the things that we're doing here is we're doing this stuff over Zoom, and I'll be the first one to tell you, I can't stand doing stuff over Zoom. And so, we really thought it was important. And I think a lot of people felt this way, that we at least provided some opportunity to provide in person input as to this this initiative. So we did have the six community open houses. And and here we are on the last step of this general plan process, which is the Town Council Public Hearing. And from here, you know, when some developer is ready to make application, they'll go through all this stuff again and give everybody the opportunity to weigh in on what actually is going to be proposed there in the context of what I'm presenting to you today and in the context of what's in the general plan amendment. This is the area of notification. I just wanted to put this in. The neighborhood meeting summary, we had of the neighborhood meetings, we had two two hour meetings with the neighborhood. I would say we probably had somewhere around thirty to thirty five people in each of those particular meetings. From there, we had multiple email, text, in person, phone call conversations. I'm going to say at least forty hours of direct follow up with with neighbors who sent, and we discussed a lot of the specific issues that you see here. It always starts off with validity of use, does it use to make sense for the site? I I think it's hard to argue that in this location, this type of use doesn't make sense for this particular area in consideration of the location next in proximity to commercial and the fact that it's, you know, it really does fit in with the the character of the community. Bufferings is is an important thing that we've discussed, open space, desert preservation, and unique character. And this is, this is a good one. I mean, an interesting one. Because when we talk about open space and we talk about intensities, you know, when you go to a low density type development, there's an interplay between low density development and the and and open space. The lower density you go, the more floor area you take, it could actually have adverse impacts upon the amount of open space that can can get preserved. And so when you look at the amendment, we talked about the intensity of development. And that the idea is is that whoever proposes will will do something that meets these objectives in a way that we feel meets these objectives when we look at at the total heights and densities and the amount of open space that's provided. Another thing that was extremely important was view protection. I actually got a photograph from one of the neighbors that said if you were to take this view away, and it was a picture of the Boulder stacks, you would be devastated. And so we included that into the general plan amendment text that that natural view protections, we need to be preserved and protected for the existing neighbors. That's why they chose their place that they wanted to live. And so we were extremely sensitive to that. And then accessing residential streets to Wildaway and Langwood Lane, you know, these are residential streets, and there's concern that, you know, these would become back doors for employees and and maintenance vehicles and deliveries. And 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 so we did stick, as a matter of fact, as of last week, we even further amended restrictions for Wildaway and Langwood Lane and how that would be included in this general plan amendment. And again, we talked about height, density, intensity, and use adjacency already. And we eliminated, you know, the the neighborhood commercial component, but still make sure that this is not going to look like a strip mall, that this is going to look and feel like it should, which is a a quality type resort that we'd be proud of to have in our community. And then the other thing that needs to be addressed is the noise and lighting. And that will be addressed. Those are the things that, you know, we're pointing these things out, that that will be addressed when we go through the site plan and rezoning process. And the open house summaries, I'd say in total, we had about thirty five participants. In general, we found that there was support or neutrality towards the amendment. You need to let somebody in? Yeah, no worries. I would say that a lot of the the conversations always kind of started and centered around other things, in particular, the issues like Town Center, safety issues on Tom Darlington. You know, a lot of the typical issues that we we get on a daily basis of people where where they have, you know, issues as far as the future of the community. I already talked about how we see additional neighborhood input on Langwood Lane, and that was included in the report and is included as an amendment to the text that we're going to be providing here to council. And then, again, the design of the future project is important. Many of the thing, one of the things that people brought up was the existing or the Hilton Hotel that's being built in Town Center. And and so to make sure that this, you know, when we looked at the things and 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 the and the criticism that's received for that particular use or the design of that, we wanted to make sure that this site really does have a unique character and that there's no corporate branding that would be built into it, and that we'll be conscious of that as this moves forward. And and so that was specifically stuck into the text amendment as well. Traffic was raised as a concern. You know, I mean, it's an arterial street, and there's a, it's an arterial intersection, and and traffic in that area is is inevitable just by the nature of growth in the area. But when you look at this type of use, it's probably the least has the least traffic impact that you're going to find versus something like like a Costco, for example, which would have like probably twenty times the amount of of traffic have been in and out. And so, and while Costco would be fantastic for economic development, this is not a Costco site. And I would never in my life suggest that it is. The other issue that came up was the question regarding for who pays for infrastructure. And so I kind of want to make it clear here that in this particular area, the city of Scottsdale owns the streets. The sewer is a private company, Liberty Liberty Utility. And the water is a separate company from the water infrastructure from the town of Carefree. And so what happens in these is is that each one of those will have requirements for what needs to happen on site. And and the developer, whoever comes and develops this site, will be required for paying for whatever infrastructure improvements are required for this particular site. I I know there's a question that's coming up, and I just as soon address it now, about the town providing incentives and how all this works. The town incentives in Arizona are extremely difficult to to implement. And with retail projects, the only way that can typically get done is you can offset public infrastructure costs for other benefit, typically sales tax of net new sales tax as being generated in the community. And that's typically how most communities provide retail projects incentives. Issue here is is that in most communities, those infrastructure pieces are owned by the community. And so the community benefit benefits that specific community. In this case, if infrastructure were to be built, say, for the roadway, well, that benefit goes to the city of Scottsdale with the revenue going to Carefree. We can't claim benefit here. It's it's illegal. As a matter of fact, there was As a matter of fact, there was a recent court ruling within the city of Peoria that specifically stated that, that if any incentives are provided, the benefit has to be directly attributed to that community that provides the incentive. Additionally speaking, and this kind of goes down to the water issue, is that there is an existing water line adjacent to the site at Langwood Lane and Tom Darlington. That's where this particular project would connect into. Additionally speaking, so when we look at water that could be developed for this specific site, it pretty much any infrastructure is going to be, is, is going to only benefit this site. And so there's no net benefit of the infrastructure potentially, most likely to the general benefit of the community. And so providing incentives for a specific user for infra, for infrastructure that will be on specifically on their site isn't going to fly, and we can't make that happen either. So I always say when it comes to the incentives, Carefree doesn't have property taxes, and that's the best incentive anybody can offer. So you know, so that's, I just want to kind of put that out in the open because it's something that's been, been asked of, of us several times. I kind of want to dive in a little deep here because I promised the folks I would, that live in these particular neighborhoods about what these expectations are. When you see the numbers there, these are homes that of, of neighbors that I've dealt with directly, and they're probably the most, some of the impacted homes as it relates to the project. Number one is, is a home that sits on Wildaway at the end of the cul-de-sac and looks at this particular parcel number five, which is what we deemed. And what you're looking at here is the aerial map. And you're looking at the floodplain now. When you look, whoop. Anne's got too heavy. And so you look at the floodplain map, when you look at the text amendment, it clearly states that there is no development in the floodplain. So the floodplain itself is a limiter towards development. We've also talked about how setbacks impact what can be developed. So when you look at number one, you look at the green area next to number one, and you look at it on the floodplain, you can clearly see developing in that site would be pretty much impossible. And, and that neighbor has specifically requested that nothing gets developed in this particular location here, and that any of the allowances for density and development would be attributed to the interior of that site, interior to the floodplain. Additionally, we look at just number two here, south of here, when we look at setbacks. You know, I just wanted to say, you know, and I've spent a lot of time on the specific site out trampling through the desert and seeing how these are impacted. Definitely, as we look through zoning, this needs to be an area of concern that how whatever gets developed is adjacency to this house here. That is, needs to be sensitive there. And then a number three, there's this area here. Again, when you look at the floodplain, the developer potentially would be here. When you look at setbacks, it really does limit this. But it's definitely an area as we go through the rezoning process that, you know, I, I urge that, that we are conscious of that of these specific areas and how these particular homes are impacted, because number three is probably the most impacted home there. And then the other homes that are up and around this area here, off Wildaway, are actually owned by the, by the property owner. And so you know, it's one of the things that, you know, that, so when they look at this area here and then in here, those are things that could be worked out through zoning and with that particular property owner. Again, I just want to kind of show the views. You know, these are pictures I took from one, which is, which is listed as Charman, looking at across that particular intersection on Wildaway, which is where the cul-de-sac is, kind of looking at what that view is, you can see where the boulder stack is here. And when you look at these pictures, the left picture is towards the boulder stack, and the right picture is towards the intersection. This is from number two, the backyard of number two, as you look across. Number three is Grenley, and number four is Dickens. And this is kind of from their front, front home. So you can kind of get a feel and look and flavor of what this looks like going back towards the site from the most impacted folks. And, and one thing I want to note is that along this wash, there is a significant amount of vegetation. And, and I would, and, and what we put into this document is the idea that we do as much preservation of this buffering and, and wash preservation as possible as we look at open space. Because these natural environment does provide a very excellent buffer between this residential and what's across the wash. Another area we looked at was on Langwood Lane from a particular home that is not quite adjacent. There's a lot in between the sites one and two. And, and so, but still, you know, we spent a lot of time with this particular homeowner trying to understand, you know, how these sites being developed would impact them. And as we looked at, you know, kind of looking at heights in, in view corridors and, and everything else, what you're looking at here is the Boulder Spa, which is about a twelve thousand square foot building across Tom Darlington off Langwood Lane. And it points to the arrow here. It's a thirty-foot tall building from the grade of this parking lot and the grade of this, which is pretty much at the grade of the street. And you can see that the top of that thirty foot goes underneath this boulder stack, that the trees you're looking at here are somewhere between eighteen and twenty-two feet. So you can kind of get a feel for what that height would look like as you're moving across this area of the view corridor that you see in blue over here. And as it goes through this site, and this site does have rock features on it as well in these areas here that are pretty significant, that will probably concentrate any kind of development that would be in here. And as we've discussed, anything north of this existing wash would look in more in the residential character. One thing I will also say this in the text amendment is that there is an opportunity, and this is what a spa can give you flexibility with, is that let's say the resort says, look, you know, somebody comes in, I don't want these two lots, we're just going to focus on here. These would could remain as is, as very low-density residential. And they already have the zoning, and somebody can come and develop those today. And they probably have the highest likelihood of being developed. Those would be allowed to be able to have access to Langwood Lane, in particular with this site here. So this kind of comes back to you, and you know, and I want to round it out with, you know, what Mr. Nee said, and what is Carefree? And, you know, here's some of the earlier pictures I could find from the archives that I have in my office. And, you know, it's, it's pretty clear that in nineteen sixty-three, it was founded pretty much with the idea that this was going to be a destination. That's very clear. When you look at the town center, you know, it was very clear that this was going to be an area where commercial was going to be a significant component to the fabric of this community. It was the first thing that was outlaid. It was the first thing that was graded. It was the first thing that was pretty much built. And so complete with the sundial and, and I'll, we all know that what the sundial was for, and the sundial is a tourist attraction. And, and, and so, you know, I think the intention of what Carefree was to be and what Carefree has been is a destination location. And I think it's also, since its inception, has been the idea that the commercial and that, and the destination retail and the destination tourism was going to be way that we as a community could help fund the services that are provided to the Carefree residents. And that has been done, you know, since its inception as well. And as Mr. Nee said, alluded to, and, and I can attest to that, this has been a very, very conservatively run, fiscally conservatively run town where, you know, the town has eked out every dollar, mostly through you taking one-time sales tax surpluses and putting it into funds that allow us to be able to, you know, whether already day fund or to, or to go towards the critical infrastructure that needs to be replaced. This town has been managed extremely well from a financial perspective. And, and I think looking at the future and, and, and understanding and being honest with the community about where potential shortfalls may be because our commercial base just simply hasn't kept up with the residential growth. That, you know, I think it's, it's very refreshing that we can engage this way as a community and engage so deeply as a community to be able to have these types of conversations. And again, you know, the idea of, of this being a unique environment of locally-owned businesses, I can't tell you enough and stress enough how hard your neighbors work to provide that and how much they depend on people coming in from out of this area to be able to support that. It is absolutely important for them to be able to have that. And so, again, you know, it's just the care, to me, this is what Carefree is. And to give you a little bit of background, I, I've lived in Arizona since nineteen seventy-eight, mostly in North Phoenix, and I raised my kids in this area for sixteen years, seven minutes from Town Hall. I've seen Carefree since before BASH has even existed. I've been here. I've stayed at the Carefree Inn, been to multiple events, have enjoyed Bartlett Lake for a long time of my life. And, and, and I came to work here because I love this area. I love this community. And, and, and I think there's such an opportunity to do very, very good quality development moving forward in this town to be able to have long-term sustainability. And then this kind of goes into the amendment text. You know, we've already walked through a lot of these things here, and, and really just the, the idea of this amendment text. And the things that I want to point out is it kind of comes down to the fit and feel of how this is going to fit into the community and how it's going to fit into the neighborhood. And this has been from start to finish significantly altered by the input we receive both from the neighborhood and the community that this truly was put together in concert with a lot of different folks and a lot of different input and a lot of different ideas. As late as, is, is the last couple of weeks, when we look at number eight, and we further look to define, you know, how the access to Wildaway and Langwood Lane would exist. One of the things I do want to note in here is, is that this does not preclude the existing property owner to access the subject property that we're talking about here from his particular property because it is adjacent to that. And if he were to continue to own that, even if it gets developed as, as, as a resort site, that, that the opportunity for him to be able to access that property from his property would still be an option. And just kind of further outline it again, looking at the allow additional level use. And then again, kind of going into, and you don't normally see this in a general plan amendment, but just outlining the types of what we absolutely know we don't want to see. And, and it's not gas stations on this particular site. It's not drive-throughs, car washes. You know, this really is going to be a resort site. And with that, I'm going to leave this here, you know, because a lot of the questions related to maps. It concludes my presentation, and I'll entertain any questions on this.
Steve, I got a question for you, buddy. Two things, the is there another option that's being considered in terms of the use of the land? Number one, number two, when you look at a plan view of this, I believe in zone three, maybe four. The, the one lot seems pretty big that you pointed out. And it looks like there's a lot of stuff on that lot, including an airplane and a bunch of other stuff on there. And I just wondered if what the hell's going on with that? What is, what is he doing with respect to this land and its use? And how it affects the appearance to the other homes that you had an opportunity to, you know, look this area over?
Yes, so so as far as the airplane goes, the existing land, the existing property owner has created kind of a mini museum walkthrough out on the particular property. So there's a lot of different features and exhibits that he's put out there. And, and the airplane was one of those particular exhibits he's put on that site. I've actually had the opportunity to walk it as part, and I think a lot of the neighbors in the area have walked it as well. It's, it's a pretty interesting and impressive thing that's been built out there, complete with a walkway, paved with a walkway. And and, and the first question you had, you were kind of breaking in and out, so I, I kind of missed that one.
Sorry. One other retail property we consider or use of this land have been considered other than a resort, number one, number two. Does this, how does this impact Savannah? I mean, there's another beautiful resort just up the street, et cetera. It's curious. Is there room for, for two such complexes?
Yeah, so we did consider other uses, and that being neighborhood retail-type uses. And one of the things that were brought up was, you know, the idea of maybe a boutique grocery store like Trader Joe's. Those other things were discussed. And as we, you know, discussed those things with other commercial users and the neighborhood, that was something that was kind of a non-starter and, and wasn't really something that they would support. And so we just felt, you know, really, it doesn't make sense to try to push that when we don't think it's going to add necessarily the net value that we would think that it could add. Because I think it could, that use could actually have more of a negative impact on our existing commercial down the street at the BASH's center. And, and when you look at the idea of how destination resorts, you know, destination areas work, they do work in aggregate by having diversity. And so while Savannah, when you look at Savannah, it, it has its own brand. And they'll tell you, you know, hey, our brand is our brand, and our brand doesn't compete with the boulders. Our brand doesn't compete with other things. Our brand is, is sole and separate to us, and, and it competes against other wellness-type resorts. And so what we look at here, when you look at, at the Hilton and, and the town center, it's, you know, drastically different. It's going to be a different type of environment, different type of stay. When you look at this, it's the same thing. And so when we had conversations with them, you know, there, there were some discussions that, look, this is, that's not our brand competitor per se. And so it's one of the things we, we look at when we evaluate the types of uses that's going to be there. But when you, again, when you kind of go back and you look at the overall size and scope and scale of the overall, I mean, we're still not even the equivalent of one large resort that's in Paradise Valley. And when you look at their mix and how destination resorts aggregate towards around each other, there's a great example of how they fit together and offer a variety of different stay opportunities.
Steve, if I might jump in here and somewhat related to that, that point, then and I want to thank Stacy and Steve and Gary for what I think is an excellent presentation on this. But there's two other aspects I would, I would put on the table. And, and one, when we started this process, it must have been twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen, something like that. And, and we went around and we talked to a lot of different municipalities. One of those municipalities was Paradise Valley. And, and we said, what is your situation in terms of commercial versus residential development, et cetera, et cetera? We even had members of the Paradise Valley Town Council come up here and, and go through the area with us. And recognize Paradise Valley has twelve to fourteen different resorts within Paradise Valley. And, and they said each of them develops its own brand, its own niche within the market. And as I look and, and I listen to what Steve and Stacy have been talking about, Hermosa Inn kind of an approach up here would be, would be a welcome one, probably with a small, I'm guessing, restaurant that would go along with it. There was another perspective also when we talked to these people. And that is the percentage of the total land acreage in, in the municipality that was devoted to commercial and the percentage to residential. With these four parcels that, that Steve has talked about, the downtown area, the state land just south of, of the airport, the northwest corner, which we're talking about here, of Carefree Highway and Tom Darlington, and the northeast corner of, of Carefree Highway and Cape Creek Road, that commercial would comprise two and one-half percent of the eighty-seven hundred acres in Carefree. That's a minuscule percentage. Everyone else that we talked to was running in the four and a half to seven percent, sometimes higher in commercial. So the land mass of Carefree would, when all of this is done, and, and the town has been talking about doing quality developments that fit in and enhance neighborhoods, when all of that is done, it's going to be ninety-seven and a half percent residential, two and a half percent commercial. So those are the, at, at least I would, I would put on the table. Are there any other questions from council members? And then we'll open it up because this is the public hearing. I believe we have it. I believe we have at least one, uh, letter that someone has written. Uh, do the council members have any further questions?
Just, just one, last if I may, just, uh, real quick, uh, Steve. A lighting issue for everybody, how, how do we, how do we address that?
Excuse me, which issue?
Lighting.
Lighting.
Yeah, I mean, lighting, you know, Stacy, if you want to more address that, because I think it's more of a question of planning.
Um, uh, thank you for the question, um. Lighting in Carefree is very what we call dark sky friendly, though it's not an official dark sky ordinance. And so any development that would, um, come through, and, and again, this is general plan amendment, this is very high level. Um, just sort of understanding of what potential uses might be on the property, you know, we're not talking to anybody, there's no development proposal in place. But in essence, they would need to comply with our current zoning requirements. Um, and so, uh, we see basically the, the one that probably is the most, um, that might be, uh, uh, an issue or not an issue. When we have to address that this property is our, would be some area lighting for parking. Um, Carefree is actually is a pretty conservative lighting, um, requirement for parking of a maximum of sixteen feet. And your, 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 uh, your, uh, the lighting, uh, the lights themselves would be, would be, um. Screened, um, and so, and light would be directed in a particular manner, so not to impact neighboring properties.
Yeah, I just, I just thought the council as a whole has been pretty sensitive about that.
Yes.
Good. Additional questions from the council?
Yes, this is John Crane, and, uh, so Steve, this is a question for Steve. In the, uh, proposed general plan text amendment, we talk about traffic a little bit. And we, you know, we speak to access, prohibits any access to while away, so that's very clear. And it says only residential access into Langwood Lane. Um, so, uh, I mean, I would be concerned about traffic coming in or out of the, uh. The property onto Langwood Lane. So when it talks about residential specifically, what's it talking about?
That's, that's a good question because I think that, that the state has actually blurred a little bit the difference between. Um, overnight stay and residential, especially as it relates to short-term rentals. Um, in this case, it residential really remains the, a, a residential home. That is operated for residential, you know, so any commercial activity or any overnight stays towards a resort. Would not be considered residential and that particular one's in there because remember we've gained the flex, the flexibility. Of allowing those lots to remain residential, so that's why that residential component is, is in there.
Okay, so if they were, uh, were developed as residential, then of course they would have access onto Langwood Lane to.
Yes.
People could go about their lives.
Just as, as they would today. So it would, it would remain with the entitlement that they have today.
Okay, great, thank you. And then item number five, we talk about utilizes massing height and density to minimize it. Site disturbance and where site intensity takes into account proximity to adjacent uses. So can you talk to in, in more detail, but what you mean by utilizes massing height and density to minimize site disturbance?
Sure, and that kind of goes to when, when I talk about the, um, uh. The types of, of zoning requirements that we look at as part of that. And so the idea of using site and massing is that if you look at the intersection, you can see that there's commercial on the intersection. And they have a certain density, they have a certain height, they have, you know, El Pedregal's fifty feet at, at a certain point. The church sits at, you know, is thirty foot tall and it is also sits at about a fifteen foot base grade. So it's, it's, it's pretty high in, 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 to the, the skyline on that particular intersection. Um, and so when we start looking at massing and heights, it's kind of towards that adjacency we say, saying, okay, yeah, that has that commercial. Feel. And then as we look back and as we go towards the, the existing neighborhoods, well, that has its, its own. You know, massing and residential, you know, as far as being residential units and, and, you know, so it's low density residential. And that, as this stair steps back towards that and gets crosses that wash or even gets towards that wash. That's massing needs to scale back down. If there is even any massing on that, that, that needs to scale back down, that allows for that, um, that. A compatibility towards the existing neighborhood.
Okay, very good, okay, thanks. Uh, and my last comment has to do with the widening of Carefree Highway. So we know that's in the Scottsdale is going to do that, so I would just say it's incumbent upon us to be. Uh, working with them to make sure they don't design that road in the vacuum, that they know what's, uh, what potentially could happen on this corner. Um. Uh, and I know we notified them as part of the course of, of, uh, we notified City of Scottsdale in the course of, of, uh. Making known this general plan amendment process. But it encourages us to, to make sure they understand what could potentially be done on this piece of property. So anyway, thank you, Steve.
Okay, thank you. Any else?
Yeah, I've got a quick question for Steve. Um, it, it, by reading this and reading the information packet, it sounds like you've done a really good thorough job of working with the neighbors. Trying to address their concerns and, and you've put a lot of protections in this general plan amendment. Uh, to protect their views, to protect their serenity, to protect the homes that, and, and the lifestyle they purchased. My question is, how can that, how, I guess it's a hypothetical question. What could a developer do to come in and to defeat some of that? What if you're not there? Different people are in charge or what have you? How tight is that to protect the neighbors?
You know, I, I, um, Council Mayor Geiger, I think it's actually a, a pretty tight general plan amendment. Um, also, you know, this is the one nice thing about Zoom, we're putting all of this on record right here. And, and one of the things that I wanted to do, because I know it's difficult for people to speak on these particular calls. Is try to go through, and that's why I walked through and took a little extra time to tell you specifically about what some of these neighbors. And what their specific concerns were and the specific hot points that they had. And I want this to make sure that it's on record and that we've had the same conversation with planning and zoning, we've had the same conversation with, um, the town council. And, and I think we've got a pretty extensive record and a pretty extensive knowledge base about what the intentions are moving forward. And I want to be honest with you, as I market this, I'm not going to, you know, it starts at the staff level. If something comes in that doesn't meet the requirements, they're probably not going to get much love from staff right out of the gate. So, um, so we are the gatekeepers and again, this has to go through an extensive rezoning process. To get, to get approval. And I think, you know, these neighbors are going to remember what was said on this particular night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Uh, would like to open this up to the public.
Um, Mayor, if I can make, uh, one additional comment, sorry, uh, Mayor, members of the council. Um, it's interesting to note that this past week, approximately one week ago, there was a press release by the town of Cave Creek. In that press release, they talked about their emerging new fire, uh, and emergency protection program. One of the things that they were trying to reconcile is how to pay for these new costs to the town of Cave Creek. And they went through a number of, of, uh, financial analysts to, to look at their respective budget. And, um, in the end, they, they said that they can cover it. By the new revenue being generated in town along the Carefree Highway Quarter. In this press release, Cave Creek Mayor Bunch credits previous councils and volunteer advocates. Of the Carefree Highway Quarter for having the vision to ensure responsible growth and development. To support the town's economic health. This was advanced planning for an awful lot of years. It wasn't by accident. Today, Carefree faces a similar issue. We have an elastic revenue stream, volatile revenue stream in our sales tax. We don't know what the future holds with some of our anchors. We have reduction in construction sales tax over time. We know that our sales tax will go up and will go down. And it's impacted by who we have on the tax roll. We know that we have to diversify. Cave Creek made that decision approximately ten years ago to diversify. And as Mayor Bunch has articulated, it was responsible growth that held the day. And whether you agree or not with what they did along Carefree Highway. It has generated significant revenue to pay for services. Simply that is the equation in front of council tonight is to look to the future. This is our fiduciary role, our fiduciary duty to the community. This is our revenue stream, this is how we collect revenue. And the diversification, just like your own investment portfolio, is critical to the success of the town and its citizens in providing services. So the equation in front of you tonight is looking ahead into the future. This development won't happen tomorrow, may not happen a year or three years from now. It's the future, but the first step in the process is this general plan amendment. And that's what we're evaluating tonight. Steve has done an excellent job in working with the neighborhood, trying to solicit input during these unique times with the, uh, COVID health emergency. And we also extend that invitation after this meeting to continue to work with the residents of Carefree. And once again, I highly encourage the residents on the Zoom call tonight to pick up that budget. Read that budget that talks about our organization. What our costs are to operate the town on a daily and annual basis. It's important for you to understand how the public money is invested. There's not a lot of meat on the bones. And so this is a critical decision, a critical path that we are on, but very similar to the town of Cave Creek. And decisions that they made to fund their fire program. That being said, Mayor, I'd be glad to address any additional questions that the council might have.
Any additional questions from the council? If not, Candace, I would ask you to, uh, read the, what I believe is the one letter which we do have. And then to open it up to the public for any questions or comments.
Mayor and council, I received a letter, um, in the, via email this afternoon. Um, and it's addressed to the council to be presented at the council meeting agenda item five. By Maureen Benedetto, Carefree resident. Candace, please have my questions and comments read to the town council meeting tonight. Carefree was separately incorporated to avoid the urbanization of Scottsdale to preserve its relaxed rural residential character. Doesn't the quote upzoning end quote of Carefree Highway and Tom Darlington? Provide a huge windfall for a friend of the mayor, Mr. Lassen. Why is our town of less than four thousand about to spend more than twenty million dollars plus on a water project? With extremely vague objectives. The town has admitted in the bond sale, the new water mains and tanks in the Boulders, which account for most of this expenditure. Are not necessary to provide Western Carefree with improved water service. What did our economic development?
You got it?
Yeah. Hi, Ms., Mr. Goldstein, can you please mute?
We just muted him.
Thank you. Um, the town has admitted in the bond sale, the new water mains and the water tank in the Boulder, which account for most of this expenditure. Are not necessary to provide Western Carefree with improved water service. What did our economic development director mean on five, five, twenty-one when writing to Mr. Lassen? Quote, the issue is putting in infrastructure that solely benefits a single property owner. And there is a renewed scrutiny on gift clause, quote, question mark. And on five, six, twenty-one, when he wrote, quote, I'll work with Gary and Greg and see. What we can do to set the table to accommodate water service in the event the amendment is successful, end quote. Could the real purpose of this water project expenditure be to support commercial development on the mayor's friends' land? In my opinion, the above reflects, my apologies. In my opinion, the above conflicts, conflicts of interest should be disclosed. Why wouldn't the town want all voters to have knowledge on the proposed commercial development? It also seems like voters should be consulted on the intense commercialization motivated by possible projected future budget shortfalls. These issues deserve investigation by town council members before they vote. These questions are not going away. Respectfully, Maureen Benedetto, Carefree resident.
Recall that I, uh, stated at the onset that we would, uh, not respond except. For personal criticisms and to correct false information.
But in a public.
We can.
But I can respond to that now. Please. So, yeah, and, and I think it's important to address the issues and that's why I wanted to discuss the idea of how infrastructure is funded and how incentives. Um, are, are, are done in communities. And so in the context of the conversation. Um, I had with Mr. Lassen, he had provided, um, a request, um, in, in, in discussion that. Many communities do provide these types of incentives. And the answer back to Mr. Lassen was exactly how I described to you how infrastructure is funded and how. Those incentives really can't and don't apply to this particular site for those specific reasons that would be a violation. Of, of, of what's called the gift clause. The gift clause is a constitutional, um. Uh, item as far as the Arizona constitution, which prohibits the, uh, government from gifting. Or lending its credit to, uh, a private entity. And so you can't even loan money to a private entity, uh, let us loan, just give money away. So. Um, and or whether it's infrastructure or any of those things, unless there's some type of public benefit that is, uh, of equal value that's received. Um, so in this context, uh. That, that's what that's referring to, and I hopefully I explained that it's a, uh, succinctly enough. And then the other one is the idea of setting the table, um, that's another term for, uh, getting a meeting together, uh. Putting a call together of, uh, you know, how we're going to discuss what that water was. I believe at that time I wasn't a hundred percent sure of where the, the water connection, um, uh, you know, was. And after consulting with, with, uh, Greg or, or the municipal, the water company. Um, executive, you know, he confirmed that the existing water line that would serve this site is, is located at. Uh, Langwood Lane and Tom Darlington. And, and, and all of this is mutually exclusive to any of the water issues that would be on the board. So there's, there's no, nothing that would be done infrastructure-wise on that that relates to this site here in any way, shape or form.
If, if I might respond also, and the implication here, and I'm, I'm reading. Provide a huge windfall for a friend of the mayor, Mr. Lassen. I know John, would I consider him a personal friend? No. A business friend like I would consider Rodney, uh, at Desert Forest and Mark at Savannah. And Sally at the Boulders and the ministers in town and the county supervisors and the county sheriff. Look, the way we get something done is to work with people. We're not here to, to be an ogre. And so do we do something personal for them? Am I involved with them at all in any business dealing? Absolutely not. And I resent these nonsense accusations. Now that keep coming out with absolutely no basis from some of the people. These are, there is absolutely no foundation to that. The one time I would, and, and let me show you the kind of things that we get called into. John Lassen came into our office and he's probably been in our office thirty times over the last two years. Twenty-nine of those times he's complaining about something or asking for something. The thirtieth time he said, I have a grandson and he's an Eagle Scout. And he's looking for a project. So Candace French, our town clerk, uh, set him up. And, and his grandson did frankly, an absolutely wonderful job of coordinating thirty people. To clean up the Cave Creek Carefree Cemetery. They hauled out brush, they put in rocks, they raised money to do this. Is that a friend? This, this is someone, uh, I like, John. We have never had dinner together, we don't socialize, we've never done anything personally. And, and I wish some of these people would start focusing on generating some facts as opposed to fabricating them. Let me continue. On a water project with extremely vague objectives. There are over a thousand people on the south and the west side of town, hundreds of whom showed up at town meetings saying. hundreds of whom showed up at town meetings saying, "Do something. We have severe water problems." They may be vague to someone who wasn't paying attention at that time, who was doing something else. But let me tell you, it's not vague objectives to fulfill for them. And I resent the implication of conflict of interest. I and the council are doing the best we can. And let me take you through an example. I was invited to go to a dinner probably a month ago with the ambassador to the United States from Mexico. And he stood up and his opening comments were, he said, "I am the ambassador to the United States. I am not the ambassador to Washington. And I and the council are council members for the residents of the town of Carefree. We're not here to support whatever HOA or individual home we come from. We're here to look after the town's residents." So enough said, I regard this letter as nonsense.
All right.
Is there anyone else you would like to speak?
We do have some hands raised there and I'll go Janet Vivas first. Yes. And Janet, if you can unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you. Janet Vivas, I live at 7021 Langwood Lane. I'm concerned about the size of this planned resort. It's gone from small and unique, like the Hermosa, which it was originally compared to, to way too big as far as I'm concerned. So put that into perspective, it's equivalent to two Hampton Inns. So why cram so much into such a small space?
Janet, I appreciate the question. And so it's one of the reasons why I wanted to put that particular slide up that had the number of rooms on there. And when we originally were talking, I think we were talking about, you know, around 100, 120 and that of size. When we had those numbers up and that was, you know, we were contemplating the idea of having neighborhood retail. And so when we looked at the Hermosa Inn, we've always used the Hermosa Inn as an example. And so as I tried to explain to you that is that Hermosa Inn only sits on six acres. This is a 21 acre site, so it's three and a half times the size. And so what I was trying to explain to you is that if you take that same standard and you apply that same, that same fraction of rooms to acreage, that it still is meeting that density that is at the Hermosa Inn. And so that's where the entirety of 21, and then I started to look at, okay, that's probably worst case scenario. And you start looking at how those, you know, the things on the site, the wash, the floodplain, you know, rock formations, setbacks are going to be required for, you know, on the east side and those types of things. It's really going to probably limit that down. And so, you know, so we're probably looking in that 18 acre range. You know, I say there's probably a 15% hit that might be happen on that particular site. And so that's kind of how those numbers kind of came about. And that's why I wanted to show that slide just to make sure that it's clear.
All right. Next, Jerry, Jerry Wetta.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, two questions. Number one, who is going to supply the water to the commercial property eventually?
The water would be provided through the Carefree Water Company. The town has an allocation of 1,300 acre feet plus an underground aquifer that it's been recharging in partnership with the city of Scottsdale. We also are receiving 378 acre feet, that's 378 acre feet from the town of Cave Creek with the recent acquisition of those respective accounts in Carefree, but on the Cave Creek system. So that would bring our surface rights of CAP over 1,600 acre feet. Cave Creek has approximately 600 acre feet that they're devoting to the Desert Hills Water Company, which is outside the town limits with the removal of our 378 acre feet. They have a water allocation that's a little bit south of what we will have. But yet there'll be a larger community with more intense commercial that is supported by a smaller water allocation and no underground aquifer. We've been planning. We've been planning our water resources for decades, planning for the recharge, anticipating the severity of the droughts. We are well positioned to deal with the future development in Carefree, including a potential resort at this site. So we've reconciled that a number of years ago and we will have sufficient water allocation to serve this site. Any other questions, Jerry? All right.
I'm sorry, that would come through our water company though, right?
That, yes, the water would be delivered through the existing infrastructure. That is correct.
Right. The other question I have is the lots that are on Wildaway, there's that proposed cove, and then I think there's two or three lots there. Do I understand that at a future time, those could be considered to be rezoned also?
I'll let Steve speak to that one, Jerry.
Mr. Wetta, I know that those sites aren't included in this general plan amendment. Are you talking about the three sites that where the homes exist?
Actually, I think there is no home there. I believe it shows, I can't tell by the map. It's a little small, but it looks like there's a proposed cove coming off of Wildaway going east.
Yeah, so if you're looking at the little cul-de-sac, there's actually, it looks, and it heads east. That actually, those properties around there are owned by the property owner of the site that we're discussing. And those would not be included in the general plan. And I believe those have homes on them at this time, so.
I don't think they do, but that's, we may be talking about, and also do I understand that lot number one could possibly be left residential or that it may be included in the whole property?
Correct. Lots one and two are, could remain residential.
And there would be no access or egress to the proposed properties from either Wildaway or Langwood. And I don't, it wouldn't affect Stagecoach because I think that's a ways away. But what would that, how would that affect that intersection at Wildaway and Tom Darlington?
Yeah, so correct, the only access that would be allowed there that we put in, it would be is in case that remains residential, you know, and so there would be a residential access point there just as there is today. So that's by right today. And then we've also allowed for, you know, as you look at how these developments occur, a lot of times fire departments like multiple access points. So, you know, we've left the option that would allow for an emergency access that would be done via a controlled access point, you know, some type of lock gate or some other device that would only allow the emergency personnel to move through it. And then, you know, one of the things, and Miss Vivas had brought this up, Janet, and we've had several conversations about this. As a town, I think we need to work with Scottsdale as well. And whatever development occurs on this particular site is we look at that intersection that is adjacent, you know, that it's a four-way, full movement intersection. And it's right across the street from where the boulder's spa currently exists. It does offset to some extent, and it's very difficult when you look in right and you're trying to make left. And I know we worked at trying to be able to minimize the landscaping that does hinder the vision towards that looking back as people are heading on Tom Darlington and heading north. But I do think that's something as a community, it's one of the things I'd like to be able to address in the future. And it could play into the context of this, of this overall development. But we don't see any significant access from the site going on the Langwood Lane or, you know, moving up into the neighborhoods. It just doesn't make sense.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, Sue Hardy.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of questions and concern. On your earlier presentation about the budget and the pie chart, what percentage of the budget revenue comes from resorts in Carefree?
Yeah, I think it was approximately 11% from resorts.
And you gave a monetary value to what you thought potential income would be from the resort in tax, resort taxes. Is that correct?
Yes, Steve went over that and I believe he was thinking approximately 800,000.
Yeah, so that's included.
What would, what kind of percentage increase would that represent? To that 11%, anything significant? Would there be a change in that?
Yeah, certainly will increase. How much it will increase, I don't have that number off the top of my head. But yeah, it would, it would be a significant increase to what we have. Right now, it's Savannah on the future, Hampton Inn will contribute. The Lutheran Retreat Center, believe it or not, provides a little bit of revenue, but not much. So we will have an increase with the Hampton Inn and certainly based upon a resort here, another increase.
The determination of 18 usable acres out of the 21, I'm assuming is based on the land features like the wash and the piles of boulders that are scattered around the property. Did it take into the amount of land that would provide a buffer? I am a neighbor. I live on Wildaway. That's not my concern. My concern is what it looks like as an entrance to the beautiful town of Carefree. So it says a community member. I'd like, it's a beautiful, the landscape there is quite beautiful and unique along Tom Darlington as you head up towards the town center. And I'd hate to lose that. So does the 18 acres include the setbacks? So it's hard for me to figure out where they're going to squeeze buildings, parking lots, pathways, roads for the deliveries and for the guests driving in and for folks coming into a restaurant. How that's going to get, you know, fit between the setback and then the natural wash, which has very deep banks on it.
Yeah, Sue, I think it doesn't, when I looked at the 18 acres, it was an approximation, you know, of looking at how those setbacks, in particular the setbacks on the west side of the site. Because, you know, commercial setbacks a lot less than a residential setback. But if we go to a residential standard and you mix that in with those features, it really does make it a little bit more difficult to develop on that side of the wash. So it's going to have an impact on that. I do agree with you as well that, you know, and especially as somebody who's driven by that site, you know, probably over 1,000 times in my life, if not more than that, that's a special location and that is going to be the entrance to the, to the, to the community. I think we need to look at how we address that specific intersection, that specific corner, how that brands this community, what it is, it's going to set the tone for what it is as we drive into town. And when people look up at that and then their eye wanders up towards Black Mountain, that is going to be a critical feature and it's something that needs to be addressed in the zoning portion of this. And when you look at how we did lows and the setbacks and the features there, you know, you probably have a lows that has more desert vegetation in it than any other lows probably in the United States. So, you know, one thing I think the town has done a good job at being able to, in those specific instances, be able to do exactly what you're talking about. And it's something that I think we absolutely need to be conscious of as we move through a site plan and a zoning on the site.
I really appreciate your response and shared concern, Steve, and the careful thinking and planning that's gone into this. Understanding those setbacks and understanding the tone, you know, it's kind of fortunate. The boulders has that pile of boulders right there at their entrance. And so here's this enormous resort, and yet thanks to that feature of those gigantic boulders, it really gives a special character to the entrance of Carefree. And then of course, the property that we're talking about and the natural vegetation on the opposite side of it is quite, you know, I think it makes a beautiful entryway into the town of Carefree. I think that's quite special and quite a contrast to the other end of Tom Darlington where we have the gas station, for example. So I don't want to lose this beautiful corner at Tom Darlington and Carefree Highway and that appearance. So, yeah, I think it is important to keep those setbacks in mind. And along with that raises for me the question of where the heck are these driveways that take the resident, the visitors to the hotel? In, you know, when you think about the Hermosa, how many driveways are required? The driveways we don't see when we go to have brunch there or we go to stay at the Hermosa, we drive into a beautiful circular entry and a valet takes our car. So where are the delivery trucks going to come in? I think we have to really think about it. If cars aren't going to be going into this property on Langwood, accessing it by Langwood Lane, and they're not accessing it by Wildaway, where are they going in? Because coming in off Carefree Highway near the corner of Tom Darlington would be quite dangerous. Coming in off Darlington between Langwood and Carefree Highway would be quite dangerous. So I'm trying to, and that would tear through the natural vegetation that would provide, what I was hoping would provide the setback.
And so, yeah, so Sue, when you look at full turn movements is what you're talking about. And the full turn movements that you anticipate, you know, and obviously I'm not a traffic engineer and I can only go by, you know, the discussions we've had and the limited conversations with, with those who understand this stuff a lot better than I do, that there are certain distance requirements. And so when you look at where the existing access is to the commercial center to the south off Carefree Highway, there's a full access movement that's kind of closer as you get towards Liberty Station. And so I'm guessing that that's probably where Scottsdale would probably continue to have a full turn movement that would be across the street in both ways. And they, you know, they would have traffic engineers, tell their traffic engineers and how that would be done in a safe manner, types of turn lanes that would be required and that and such. The other location, you know, and I think it's like, what's the distance? Yeah, 660 feet. You know, so when you take the 660 feet and you go from Carefree Highway north on Tom Darlington and you go from Langwood Lane south, it leaves about a 40, 400 foot area somewhere in there where you can potentially put, you know, another full turn movement that would be within what's considered safe. And again, that would be, you know, something that Scottsdale would work with their traffic engineers and figure out how to best do that.
And that's not too close to the wash. That wash gets pretty intense.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I did look at that specifically. And there is room in there with the wash and natural features that would allow for that full turn movement coming off the 600 foot from Carefree Highway. And again, you know, these are for, again, engineers are going to have to figure this out and it's going to have to be done safely. And, you know, and they're going to be requiring, you know, a full turn movement to go towards the town center area.
I really appreciate you guys giving me this time to ask my questions. My, I've had some visitors in town with me today. I took them over to see the gardens. They're beautiful. Everyone who visits with me, that's the first place we go to visit. When we leave the gardens to do window shopping and to go shopping, my visitors aren't spending their money in town. The retail is very disappointing. It's discouraging to go and see every other store or every third storefront empty. Part of the rationale for this development is to attract folks. And we're saying, you know, I heard earlier, saying that part of the benefit of having a resort is because these people, our guests at the resort will go and shop across the street in town center. But that's not my experience. That's not what I'm seeing. My friends, when they come to visit, they love to walk through the gardens, but they're shopping in Scottsdale and they're shopping in Cave Creek, particularly Cave Creek. So I'm not confident that this is going to generate if the town, if we really don't do something serious about having some more beautiful shops in town and making the shopping more appealing and attractive. I'm not confident that we're going to get the additional revenue that we're hoping for. I'm not confident that we're going to get the additional revenue that we're hoping for from additional resort rooms and bedrooms.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's an excellent question. And, and, and that's why I wanted to show the picture where they have all the four different areas and town center being one of those areas. There's been a ton of effort placed on the town center and looking at the redevelopment and revitalization and how we can work upon doing that. We've actually have a lot of new shops opening up and we have a new home goods store opening. We have a coffee shop, bike shop coming in. And so we're seeing a lot of positive traction. My conversations with the local businesses have been very positive. As of late, the traffic to the town center has been increasing. And so we definitely are heading in the right direction, but part of that is just looking at the overall infrastructure for town center, looking at pedestrian walkways. You know, we talk about it being walkable, but it's not really well connected to the existing neighborhoods. It's not really well connected internally. And understanding where the parking is. So I, I, I answer that because, and I think you asked a question and it, it is related because it is part of the rationale for why we're doing what we're doing, how all these pieces fit together. And so, you know, we're giving ourselves the best foot forward to be able to help make the town center an area that is the kind of thing that you would be proud to bring your guests to and that we're proud of the guests that visit here want to go to. And I do see a lot of people now coming down on bicycles from Savannah. So that's a very good sign. And I know we probably went past our three minutes, so I don't.
Sorry. Thank you very much. My final, just in summary, I just want to say, I, I, I don't think it's wise to, I think it's premature to approve something like this until we're certain that we have an accurate representation of what are the usable number of acres. Otherwise, we're over representing how many beds can be on this property. I think the setbacks are an issue. I think the land features are an issue. I just think, to me, it seems, appears like the eighteen acres may be just a little bit too high of an estimation. And I think the access also, it would not be wise to approve this until we're confident about the safety or the viability of access to such a resort from the, the streets we have there by leaving out Langwood and Wildaway. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, Sue. Thanks for all your input, by the way.
All right. Next up, Ms. Barber and then Mr. Postio and Ms. Renfro are on deck. So Ms. Barber, if you can unmute yourself.
I did. Thanks, Gary. So if I understand correctly, what is driving these developments is the need to generate sales tax revenue. And my thought is, would we not be better off putting our focus on where we can get the biggest bang for our buck? And Steve, as you mentioned, Cave Creek is doing a really wonderful job in generating sales tax revenue on that corner of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road. And that's an area that we rezoned in 2018. So my question is, I'm not sure why we are focusing right now on this resort area when we could be focusing on perhaps putting a Costco on Cave Creek Highway and Carefree Road. A typical Costco generates about a hundred and sixty million dollars per location. And I think most people would say that a Costco is pretty much going to guarantee you success of revenue. Whereas as Ms. Hardy pointed out, a resort is iffy. You have seasonality. You have a chance of it not being successful. Look at El Pedregal. Whereas a Costco, you're pretty much guaranteed you're going to have some success. So I guess I understand and, and I completely concur that we definitely need to generate some additional money, whether it's through property tax or whether it's through sales tax revenue. But I think we're a small town and we should focus on where we're going to get the biggest bang for the buck. And the fact that we rezoned something in 2018 and there's really nothing there yet and we know that that's successful based on Cave Creek's model. That's what I'm really confused about is why we're even talking about this rezoning a resort now when we haven't even taken huge advantage of what we know is a corner that generates gigantic commercial sales tax revenue. Thanks. That's all I had to say.
Yeah, Ms. Barber, thanks for your question. And, you know, and it's interesting, I mean, that you brought up the Costco for that particular location. And then one of the issues that people bring up is, is overall traffic and how that impacts. And I'm going to tell you that, that Costco comes with its baggage too. And you're talking about a lot of deliveries. You're talking about an extreme amount of in and out traffic. It's probably the largest traffic generator commercially used that you can get. And so, you know, while I said previously, earlier in this presentation, wow, it'd be great to have a Costco. I don't know if that's what those neighbors on that corner even expected either. And so, you know, so those are the things we try to be conscious of when we look at the scalability of this town. You know, we're talking about the least intensive use and now you're talking about the most intensive use. And I agree, there's a big bang for the dollar there. I just don't think we've got the right spot necessarily potentially for a Costco. And if you look at where Costcos go anyhow, the more likely location is going to be Dove Valley or Carefree Highway and I seventeen off of a freeway location where they can just get an extreme amount of traffic volume and they just aren't going to get that traffic volume here. And so, and the site itself is probably on the minimal size of what a Costco would, would, would want to go on. And so those, that's kind of addressing the Costco issue. And and when we talk about it, and this kind of goes to Ms. Bevis's last, gave us his last comment, you know, this, this isn't a rush to a, a resort. These are things we do and, you know, we don't do this stuff linear, linearly. We do these things in concert. And how they all play together. This is just the very first step in outlining a use for a particular site to protect ourselves for the future. So that's what general planning is about this. And then again, that's why I wanted to clarify, this is not an upzone. It's not a rezone. There's no zoning that's going on the site today. There's going to be a separate zoning process that needs to occur here. And so this is just making sure that we're protecting our future at this time. And, you know, there's no project associated with it. This is understanding that when we look down the road, this is a good fit for our community. And I also want to say, you know, and, and, and one of the frustrating things about the site that's been, that's on Cave Creek Road and Carefree Highway is, is that we did have developers that were interested in that site. And particularly we had Sprouts and that Sprouts was denied because we didn't have the water resources available to us at that site because they belonged to Cave Creek. And so Cave Creek specifically stymied our ability to develop that site by not allowing water be, give, uh, by serving, uh, an, uh, will serve letter that was requested by that specific developer. And as a matter of fact, so much time went by that that development never even occurred on that particular site. And that is a, a one reason why when we start looking at how we're looking at our overall water management and what that means. If we can't develop that site because we can't provide water to it, think about it. What we could have put there, we've probably lost about four million dollars of revenue already. It had that Sprouts actually, which was their first location that they chose, had gone on that site. And so that's why these things are all important, that we put them together this way. And, but I appreciate the question.
Steve, can I just add a comment? Very good point I was going to share as well, Ms. Barber, is that without this infrastructure program with respect to the water, so forth, for our town, if we don't have control of the use and access to our water supply, we're going to continue to go through what we did with the loss of Sprouts. And they just literally came in and took that from behind our backs and we lost that. And so as Steve mentioned, we've lost millions of dollars because we didn't have full control of our water network and system to be able to apply the will serve letter to Sprouts. So let's keep that in mind and, and that's a very good point that Steve brought up. This is another reason why we have moved forward so aggressively, I should say, it, with respect to getting control of our water. And we went through a, a lot of time, money and so forth to get, get that. So when the time comes, we can develop that corner appropriately for our community. So that was just a, just a bad situation that we had to finally get control of.
Thank you, Steve. Gary, if we might move on. All right, Mr. Postio. You can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Thanks. You know, I, I, I have to, in hearing this discussion, kind of think about all the reasons why I moved here. And I can't, you know, speak for anybody else, but I heard comments earlier about the, the beauty of the area, the, the gorgeous topography of that corner and all the way up Tom Darlington and all of the natural beauty we have around us. And, you know, it just seems that development of all of this property for commercial purposes in order to generate sales tax revenue does come at a cost to each of us who lives here. And that is that, you know, it's probably not going to be as nice a place in the future. And I think, you know, the comment was made by Steve early on that we have to steward what is given to us. And that's, it's not just economics. It's also the beauty of the place, the environmental impact, the, just what we had when we got here and how do we leave it when we go? It, and what we're doing this for is in order to save having a property tax. When it sounds like we are going to have to have a property tax at some point anyway, because the reason one has property taxes is because the needs of the residential community outstrip the ability of the commercial part of the town to provide those revenues. And I don't think there's any long-term solution to that. The expenses are going to continue to go up. And we have to ask ourselves, what do we want? Do we want to have, you know, wall-to-wall commercial development? Or do we want to preserve beautiful night skies and beautiful desert open space and have to pay a bit of a property tax? It's, you know, we don't have sixteen resorts like Paradise Valley and avoid, you know, having, we will never have that much contribution to the town's coffees. But I think, you know, this is an irreversible decision. Once this property gets zoned for commercial purposes, it's not going to go back. And as someone else has pointed out here, we do have another large parcel at the other end of town that is sitting there vacant. And when we, when we commit things to commercial development, it's unlikely to be reversed in the future. So I think we all just have to consider that. Since this is not something that's going to the vote of the community, which, you know, I think there may have been some confusion about that at the beginning of these discussions. I do think, you know, the town council has to think about what really is best for all of the residents. If this is not going to go to a vote, what's best for the town, not just in the near term, but in the long term. And that's all that I have to say. But thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Postia, I appreciate the comment. I think you just made more of a, of a statement and comment. I don't know if I'm ready to really respond to you.
All right. Next, next up, Ms. Renfro.
Thank you so much. First, as a comment, I have to say I'm so disappointed that all of the work to buy back customers and add additional storage for the five hundred people in Carefree who deserved better water appears to be needed so that we can commercially develop the other areas that we need for revenue. But aside for that, I have two questions. If all four areas are developed and produce a sales tax that you are anticipating, how long would this delay the need for a property tax? And second question, if we could somehow apply a property tax now that would prevent the need for development of these retail sites, how much would it be? Thank you.
It's difficult to, to tell what a, a property tax assessment would be. Obviously, the conversation over time in my twenty years in community development and, and, and the last twelve years in, in town administration has been resistant to a, a property tax. And, and that seems to be something that's a common thread through past leadership that has transitioned through the community and residents. So, you know, if you're proposing a, a property tax, you know, that has to be a, a citizen-driven process. Cave Creek, once again, has made the deliberate choice to look at these high-traffic areas. They have done a great job in, in trying to preserve land within the community. Carefree has also started a preserve. Perhaps many of you are not familiar with that. But I worked with a number of property owners to donate and we purchased with the past development fees that we used to assess but can no longer assess because the state law changed in which we allocated money to purchase land in the northern parts of Carefree. We have approximately sixty acres that are beginning of a preserve and we're trying to work with nearby property owners. So we are trying to preserve the desert around us. This location at the northwest corner of Tom Darlington and, and Carefree Highway is a very high-traffic area. It's not a quiet area. It's not conducive to a, a low-density residential area. If you stand at this intersection on this piece of land, you will hear that noise. That's why the other corners did not develop as low-density residential. And those properties used to be residentially zoned properties. On historic general plans, they were also indicated as residential.
I'm sorry. My question is simply about property tax estimates.
Yes, so I, I, I don't have the estimate of what that would be. That would be something that the, the community would have to decide.
So how can people judge whether they'd be willing to sacrifice one for the other if there's not even a ballpark estimate?
Early on in the presentation, I, I, on the, one of the, one of the slides, there was a bullet there and it indicated approximately one million dollars in sales tax revenue would be equivalent to about a four hundred to five hundred dollar property tax. So that was a broad statement. Obviously, you know, it, it depends on what you're, you're trying to fund. But that gives you a, a benchmark of, of what a property tax perhaps could be in the, the town of Carefree.
Thank you. So if all these places bring in the sales tax revenue, how long before we need a property tax anyway, do you think?
Well, my, my hope is, is, is that it's, it's extended indefinitely. I mean, look at the town of Cave Creek once again. They're looking at absorbing a fire program that adds another two and a half to three million dollars to their budget with the possibility of that escalating with additional firehouses in the future. They feel that based upon the revenue that is being generated by the new commercial in town, they will not need a property tax. So it's very viable that perhaps we, we may not need a property tax. You look at, yeah, you look at the town of Paradise Valley, you look at the town of Paradise Valley, same thing, they don't assess a property tax. They are a lot larger. They, they have those resorts that anchor the revenue into their community. And they do not need a proper tax and most likely will not need a property tax in the future. And that revenue stream helps to play, pay for a municipal lease department as well as a, a fire department that they partner with the city of Phoenix. So two large expenses that are generated through sales tax. So there is a possibility that we may not need a property tax.
Great. Thank you so much.
Sure. All right. Janet, did you have something else?
Yes, I have one other statement I want to make and it's about Langwood. Langwood takes in traffic from Ridgeway Estates, Wildaway, Stagecoach Pass and turnaround traffic for the boulders. Additionally, there's a windy N S curve on Langwood. It's very dangerous and exiting onto Darlington left or right is a challenge. Stagecoach and Langwood are used as detours and shortcuts to avoid traffic. And I'm sure that if a resort goes in, Langwood will become a nightmare as well as Stagecoach. Do you have any, anything you could tell me that's going to make me feel better about that?
The, the idea is not to have traffic from this resort on Langwood Lane. It's to focus it off of Tom Darlington. You're, you're diving into details as soon as. You're, you're diving into details, as soon as we go forward into the zoning process, which is more prescriptive, that we, we do these assessments and we, we deal with the mitigation of that on the neighborhood itself. The general plan level is a real broad level that we don't dive deep into these respective issues. So you raise an important issue and one issue that we will try and mitigate and, and prevent that traffic from going down Langwood associated with this hotel.
How can I be included in any planning on that?
There's a whole public process associated with rezoning. So this is the first step in that. You will be involved in that process as a nearby neighbor. So, so one more hand raised, I think that's Ms. Graves.
Yes, hi, I'm a new resident of Carefree. We just moved here in April, and I'd just like to reiterate, I, we did move here for the quiet and low-density nature of Carefree. We're in the Boulders, and I'd like to just reiterate what Ms. Renfro and perhaps Mr. Pistio suggested, that maybe a lot of the residents would prefer a property tax in lieu of this continued development.
Thank you. All right, Mayor, that's the end, actually, yes, the end of public comment.
Okay, that concludes the public hearing and public comments. Candace? Oh, well, before we go to Candace, is there anyone who would like, any of the council members who would like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-17 for a major general plan amendment of the 21 acres from very low-density residential to special planning area to allow for future hospitality use with possible ancillary retail?
Mayor?
Are there any of the council members who would make that motion?
Mayor?
Yes?
Before, before we do that, I just want to make sure that I understand and everyone else understands, what we're approving is just a plan amendment. We're, we're not changing the zoning. If and when somebody does come to us with such a resort, they'll still have to go through all the planning processes, and we'll be able to, to, to control or to make sure that everything is, is in accordance with our standards and with what we're looking for and without changing the nature of our town. Is that correct?
Let me not answer that. Let me ask Stacy and Gary.
Yes, you are correct.
Okay, just want to, I just wanted to make sure. So we're just approving the amendment, nothing will happen immediately. When it does, we all have a chance to have input again, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And I would be, I would be happy to move that we pass, oh gosh, where is it?
2021-17.
Second. We have a motion and second on the floor. We can open it up to council if they have any additional comments.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments I'd like to make. You know, these are really tough situations. I live near the northeast corner of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road, so I'm sensitive to the thoughts of a Costco there. We went through this process over many, many years. I'm going back 15 years and many battles. I thought the neighbor, the neighbors there did a really good job of working with the town to kind of come up with a plan that was somewhat of a compromise, and it didn't, you know, I think it's something they can live with. I certainly appreciate the comments from the neighbors close to this, this corner here we're talking about. It would be really helpful, I've heard comments about a property tax. I've been involved with the town since 2013, although I've only been on the council a year, and my whole time being involved with the town, it's always the property tax was never going to happen. There's never been any support for that, and I've always operated under that principle that we're not going to have a property tax. It would have been great over the last year if some folks who had spent a lot of time fighting things and making petitions had brought a petition forward with 700, 800 signatures requesting a property tax, so we don't have this development, commercial development. But that wasn't done, and I don't know that there is a big appetite for a property tax out there. It has to be something that's driven by the citizens. The council cannot impose a property tax. The voters have to vote to approve a property tax. So that, that's a concern, I just don't know if that'll ever happen. The second thing I want to say is I want to clear the air here, and as someone who's been involved in this water project for Carefree since the beginning, 2013, I can tell you unequivocally that the people that I've worked with and the time that we spent, we, we fought for this water project because we want representation in the say-so of our water resources. We are, we have nobody representing us. Cave Creek controls our water, we can't vote on that council. That's why we wanted this water project, because there was a lot of problems and some big problems to come. Although Cave Creek has made progress, there are some formidable problems that can't be overcome. So, uh, the takeaway should not be that this water project is for development. There are some benefits to development by having this water project, but there's 1,000 people in this town that are adamant that they want water because they need to have a voice in a critical future infrastructure.
Can you stop yelling?
I'm sorry, what? Anyway, that's all I have to say, thank you.
I, I would like to add something, if I may. And, and I think it's very important that, that, you know, people understand that, that, this has been a long process, there've been a lot of meetings that have gone into getting to this point, and as a town, we are evolving, things are changing. I'm on Carefree Water, why should I care? Well, because we have citizens that lack representation that need that, and, and we have an infrastructure that is such that needs to be updated as well. Regarding economic development and regarding a general plan amendment, those are things that are constantly in motion and have been in, in talks for years and years, and this process has been extremely drawn out, well-thought-out and researched to, to the point that, that it turns out much more that, that can be done in, with regard to that research. But these talks will continue. But an amendment is, is simply that, it is, it is in an evolution, and it is something that, that as we change and we continue to change as a town within with regard to our demographics and with regard to the, to the face of this community, is something that has to happen. Doesn't mean that, that, you know, a, a Holiday Inn is going on that northwest corner tomorrow, but those are things that, that, you know, will be under discussion with regard to what should go there once an amendment is done. Maybe nothing will go there at all, but, and it is something that, that has to be addressed, and, and an amendment is an important thing to do at this time for our town.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from council members?
Yes, this is John, John Crane. So I think Gary used the word that we have a fiduciary responsibility, and that's true, but we also have a responsibility to preserving the nature of what we have. I think Sue Hardy's comments are right on the mark. Now, just to, when something is eventually built there, that we have landscaping and setbacks that preserve much of what we have. And I think going through this process, Chris, this is a general plan amendment, then it has to come back for, for zoning eventually by, by an applicant who brings a site plan. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but we'll have the ability to exercise some discretion and ask for setbacks which are possibly greater than what's, what our standards are today in terms of what our ordinances and regulations say. And so that's why these future processes are so important, that we are engaged, that the neighbors are engaged, and that at this meeting and everything that Steve compiled and the inputs from the, those nearby residents are a matter of record, and we can fall back on that as our, as our guidance in how we manage what eventually happens on this property.
John, can I just present a reminder that a few years ago, there was a, a, an amendment, excuse me, of a rezoning of the northeast corner of Cave Creek and Carefree Highway, and we listened to the neighbors behind that, that, that property there and placed some development restrictions on that. We had discussed that, and, and we, we listened, we talked, we collaborated with the folks behind there, and we came to compromises. And because of that reason, that property is still vacant, waiting for the right development to come along. It's not a gas station, it's not a car wash, it's not a Costco for that matter, and, and it could very well be that, you know, the result of this general plan amendment on the northwest corner will result in the same thing, waiting for the right development that the neighborhood agrees upon and the residents.
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none. Candace, would you please do the roll call?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Councilmember Geiger, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatcher, how do you vote? Councilmember Croyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Delicio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Crane, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Six to zero, one absent.
Thank you. That concludes the public hearing and the passage of Resolution 2021-17, going on to item number nine, review, discussion, and possible action authorizing the council and the mayor to enter into a contract with Copper State Pavement and Authorization of Capital Improvement Project Funds for a Street Maintenance Program. And I'd like to thank Stacy and Steve for their participation this evening, and I know they have family duties that are calling. Mark, would you please take item number nine? This is Mark Millstone, the Town Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and council members, as well as everybody else on the Zoom call. So as part of our ongoing pavement management cycle, we have come up with the project this year being Cave Creek Road. It's in essentially three different sections. The section from right behind me at Town Hall to Mule Train is going to be a mill and overlay. We plan on milling off two inches and replacing that two inches. And then from Mule Train to Pima Road, we plan on doing a crack seal as well as a slurry seal. And then finally, way out east by Desert Mountain Parkway, there's an area of about 200 feet that has arguably been pushed off between the two towns. Scottsdale said it's not theirs, we said it's not ours, so for about 20-plus years, nothing has been done on that 200-foot section of pavement. So it's in really bad shape. So that's the, what we're calling Project Three. That will also be a mill and overlay. In, in addition to the pavement work, we currently have two crosswalks that are going to be upgraded, refitted with pedestrian equipment to make it safer for our pedestrians to cross Cave Creek Road. Those two intersections are at Hum Road as well as Carefree Drive. Now, during the bid process, we also had a four-way crosswalk at Tranquil Trail. Subsequent to the bid, actually during the bid process, the residents were concerned about noise with respect to motorcycles stopping at the four-way intersection and revving their engines. Apparently, there's a noise problem currently, and this would just aggravate that. So the decision was made to remove the crosswalks at Tranquil Trail and look for a solution at that location in the future. So that's where we come to the funding issues, and it's a little convoluted, so let me see if I can share my screen here. If I can find it, here it is. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the original contract and the responsible lower bidder was Copper State Pavement Incorporated. Their initial bid was $1,43,003, I'm sorry, $43,365.83. Now, we determined that instead of stopping the bid and changing the plans and then rebidding, we decided to continue with the bid process because we were concerned about how many bidders we were going to get. So we continued with the bid process, but ultimately made a change order in effect. But we held that back to give us leverage to make sure that the contractor would come in and still sign the bid. So the change order reduced the overall bid by $45,748.37. So that's where the revised contract amount is now $997,617.46. That's where that number came from. And in a second, I can go down and talk a little bit about the change order. But, so right now, as, as the mayor stated, we're looking, we're requesting to award the construction contract to Copper State Pavement, and we're not looking to have it signed now because I have to bring in Copper State and negotiate their original contract, the revised contract, as well as a change order. So we're just looking for an authorization to award the contract to them. And additionally, we're going to add a contingency, which is a little on the high side of 20% in the amount, the contingency amount of $199,522.54. Now, I want to make it explicitly clear that the 20% contingency is for whatever may increase the price of the contract, but we don't anticipate spending all of that money. And with that said, the amount of money we have in our original budget is $1,215,970. So even with the contingency, we're well below the existing number that's funded. Let me go down a little here. So here's the start of the change order. The change order takes into account essentially two major things. One is the deletion of the crosswalks at Tranquil Trail. And the second area would be an actual add for rectangular rapid flashing beacons to be placed into the contract to change what we had in there, which was the circular rapid flashing beacons, which don't really meet MUTCD standards. So as you're looking at this screen, the original change was a deduction of $105,000 and a little bit extra, but we had to add back in an amount of $59,500. And that's where the total deduct then is the $45,748.37, giving us an actual contract value of $997,617.46. So with that, I'm open to any questions anybody may have.
This is John, I have two questions, and maybe this, maybe Gary can help with this. In, in years past, when we had roadwork, we were able to piggyback on contracts with Scottsdale, which... which provided us some pretty attractive rates for having things done. So, so Gary, does that not apply here? Or is that, is that no longer an option?
So that piggyback option was an option in a existing contract with the city of Scottsdale as well as the town of Buckeye. So we used two of those contracts in the past to piggyback on. The contract has to allow for that provision. Secondly, it has to be like-for-like. In this case, we have an assortment of treatments with a two-inch mill and overlay. We have pedestrian crosswalks, and we have a slurry seal in addition to a crack seal. So it's a combination of things. It's a very unique project. So we cannot use a piggyback provision due to the uniqueness of this project.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Mark, my second question has to do with the crosswalks. So upgrading or addressing these crosswalks is long overdue, and I'm glad to see we're doing it. So what should we expect after this is built? What should we expect that'll be different than today on these two crosswalks?
Mark, before, Mark, before you, before you answer that.
Yes.
John, I'd like to know how it, how it conforms to the plans that Rick Engineering put together for those crosswalks.
Well, actually, this, thank you, Councilman Croyer and Vice Mayor John. So this is, is actually, we used Rick's plans to upgrade these crosswalks. So we took their crosswalk plans, threw them into the bid packet, so they're exactly what Rick had designed for these crosswalks.
So it's got all the elements that they had, that they had recommended?
Correct, yes. With the exception, like I talked about, instead of the circular rapid flashing beacons, they're having these rectangular ones. I actually have this up here. So here, if you can see this, so the rectangular flashing beacon is under the walking, pedestrian walking sign in between the arrow, and there's a push button down below. So these flash extremely brightly, they're LED lights. I think they can be seen a half a mile away, if not more. So there's state-of-the-art type new safety equipment that would be put in for pedestrian safety at these crosswalks.
You know, that's terrific, and it's, it's time that we start. You know, I know a lot's been going on in the last two years as we've been trying to work out all the details for the crosswalks. But people, but the residents haven't been seeing it. So to actually now start building them and fixing them, there are going to be a lot of people who are very happy, finally.
And I completely agree, Councilman Croyer, and I appreciate the comment. I'm very excited to get these going.
Mark, again, what is the timing on this?
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. We were a little bit delayed for various reasons, but we're at, we're, we're at where we are now. So as soon as I get an approval from the town council, I'm going to bring them in. We're going to negotiate the change order. Hopefully, they're okay with that. I expect a start date of around January first, and they have a 60-day time limit to complete construction activities. Now, unfortunately, some of the work they're doing is temperature sensitive, and we're in the season where that may come into play. So during the period, like for instance, Friday, I heard the high is going to be 60. So we're in the winter season even for Arizona, and there are some temperature constraints that they may lose some days on. So of course, we can't hold the contractor to 60 days if he loses time due to temperature-sensitive issues. In other words, we don't want him to be putting out materials in a climate that he shouldn't be doing it. So we would have to extend, hopefully, slightly, the number of days so that they can get in the work they need to get done.
And, and Mark, what about the crosswalks on Tom Darlington? Will anything be started on those?
So that actually, well, so a yes and no answer. So as part of this contract, no, but that's my next item that we'll, we'll bring up.
Thank you.
Mark, another question. We look at, at Hom and Cave Creek Road. Can you put that on the screen, like the top-down view of that?
Which one, John, did you want to say?
Oh, Hom and Cave Creek Road.
Oh, okay.
So when we do this, so will there now be an island for someone to like catch their breath or, or? So they're safe and they can then proceed?
Yes. So the answer to that question, Mr. Vice Mayor, is no. There will not be an island in Hum Road.
But that, that was a part of Rick's original plan?
So Councilwoman Croyer, I'm not familiar of that ever being a part of this plan.
John, I remember it being part of it, don't you?
Yes, that's why I asked.
Yeah, I remember.
So, yeah, unfortunately, you know, everybody knows that I'm kind of new. So it's always been like this as far as I, I've known. So I can check on that and get back to you on why.
Yeah, Stacy's gone, right?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, there, because, you know, it goes across, you know, a lot of traffic. There's, there's no median. And so there's no place to safely wait in case people on one side or the other aren't stopping. And that was, that was the purpose of it.
And, and that would be a correct statement. So let me check with Rick and find out why that went away.
And then we have automatic low lighting that will kick in on that center island.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I thought we had on that, on that little island piece, a little low-level lighting that would automatically kick on so it wasn't so dark.
Yeah, again, I can't answer that right now. So let me check on that.
Mark, what would the, what would the impact on timing be if you were to resolve these last remaining things, like an island in the center? We're going to meet a week from this evening if we postpone this vote until then.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that that would be an additional change order. We're running tight with construction as it is, temperature-sensitive construction, and I would rather do that, the change order route. But if the council's not comfortable, I can definitely look into that and find out. I can talk to Rick tomorrow and find out why it's no longer there. I mean, they must have had a good reason to remove it. So, yeah, I can find that out tomorrow.
Okay, we're talking here and, and our feeling is, let's go ahead with the vote. Let's get on the schedule and get this done. Let's pursue the change order and, and get this done so that it is, is as appropriate as, as we can make it.
That works for me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any further questions, comments?
And any costs ramifications associated with the change order can come back to the council for approval.
Very good.
Okay. So, Mark, if I might ask you to phrase what you're seeking authorization for?
So at this point, I am seeking authorization, Mr. Mayor, for the ability to award the contract to Copper State with the proviso that it still has to be negotiated due to change order, number one.
Okay, and the amount of that would be?
I'm sorry, that's the contract amount. We're also authorizing the 20% for contingency. So the total amount we're looking to authorize from the Capital Improvement Projects Fund
Okay, and, and we'll deal with the change order in a subsequent meeting.
Yes, and, and actually, looking at this again, Mr. Mayor, the contingency may well be enough to handle an increase due to new median put in. So that could very well fit in that amount.
Excellent. Is there any council member who would make the motion, which Mark just said?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve as, as the town engineer is requested.
Is there anyone who would second that?
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, comments? If not, we'll go to a vote.
I'll just say, I'm in favor of getting on with this, but we really need to make sure we go back, and, and it sounds like we will, make that Hom Cave Creek Road crosswalk safe with some private island, median island, so folks can get across there safely.
Yes.
Agree.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Candace, would you please poll the council?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Geiger, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatcher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Croyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Delicio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Crane, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Six to zero with one absent.
Okay, thank you. That's item number nine, item 10. Again, with, with Mark, review, discussion and possible action to approve temporary improvements for the existing crosswalk located at Ridgeview Place and Ho Road.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm a little confused about how to unshare and reshare.
At the top of your screen, Mark, it should say stop sharing. If you click on that.
Yeah, I don't have that on my screen. I don't know what's up here. I have a grid and I have a few other things. Okay.
Mark, you want to walk down the hall and come into Gary's office?
Well, you know what? I can, I can use this. It's not quite as good as what I needed, but I can use this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, okay, this is essentially the same thing. So first of all, I'd like to say that I'm highly excited about this. As Councilwoman Croyer said, we've talked a lot about crosswalks and we haven't done a lot. What's happened here is, as the mayor knows, and probably the council members may know also, we've had some serious volatile conditions at this crosswalk at Ridgeview Place and the Ho Road, crossing Tom Darlington. We've been to mag twice, the Maricopa Association of Governments for funding. Were turned down twice, even though the second time we revised our submission and we're told the evaluation system changed. And it apparently did change, but it didn't change enough to help us. And what added insult to injury is all the people who evaluated the projects, there were 15 of them, and we came in at number 11, told us that our project was the most needed and the best project out there. Yet because of their evaluation system, we did not win funding for this project. So as most of you probably know, I put safety as the number one priority as in everything I do, being the town engineer. So I was extremely frustrated for a couple of days after not getting funded. And I brainstormed and I said, you know what? I think we can do a project that would fix most of the safety conditions, use public works staff and use existing funding. Now, it's not as aesthetically pleasing as it would have been if we had the roughly $125,000 to do it. But this is exciting to me because this is seat-of-the-pants engineering, back-of-the-envelope engineering. So I've come up with a brainstorm on how to, excuse me, make improvements to this crosswalk. So here's an existing picture of what we're looking at. The existing crosswalk is wide open. It's about 76, I'm sorry, 67 feet from face of curb to face of curb. It's at the end of a curve, as well as it's also at the crest of a vertical curve. So, excuse me a second. So we have a lot of things going on here. It currently has impavement sensor lights, which, when they were first put in, worked really well. But due to hits from vehicles as well as fading of the lenses, the impavement lights don't work as well. Additionally, the location of the flashing beacons on either side of the intersection are roughly in places that are hard to see. So again, I brainstormed and I said, we had to do something here. So I'm going to fly by the next couple of slides. And here is some pictorals again about what Rick wanted to do. And so they wanted to have some curb bulbouts, which essentially means you're taking the curb and revising it and moving it out to decrease the width of the roadway and slow the vehicles in this area. They also wanted to put in a pedestrian refuge, as you talked about, for Hum Road similarly. Here's another one, you know, the overhead view of what they were doing. New crosswalk, in this case, they were going to elevate it so it would be more visible. And they were going to actually put in rapid rectangular rapid flashing beacons, just like we had seen earlier. And here's another view. Oh, I'll go back here a little, actually. So they are, if you're looking at the right side, they were striping out some areas of roadway. So in other words, this crosswalk would be in an area with reduced traffic flow also, similar to going into northbound, going into Stagecoach Pass, where it goes down to one lane in each direction. Of course, we don't have a crosswalk over there, but it'd be a similar condition. And again, here's another quick view of what Rick had decided to do. And actually, these are not final plans. They're only at the 80% stage. So we have never received final plans as of yet. So the next slide is my, again, back-of-the-envelope approach. So here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to reduce a lane in each direction, like Rick did. Now, the way we could do that, there's several ways. And the first one that popped into my mind was to use what I call wheel stops, place them in the areas of these trapezoids so that, in other words, that would disallow traffic into that lane. And this would be a multi-phase. So first, we'd put down the wheel stops and then maybe the following year, when we got more funds, we'd do something to ameliorate the effects inside that median, if you will. What's not shown here and is on my PowerPoint, which I can't get to, is I've also looked at putting what, what we call traffic buttons. They're actually called buttons. And so these are the four-inch domed-shaped structures that go, are on Cave Creek Road prior to this stop signs. So they cause what we call a rumble. So they cause, uh, what we call a rumble strip activity to warn, uh, vehicles that they're coming up to something whereby they're either gonna have to stop or they have to pay more attention to what they're doing. Now, I'm leaning towards putting the buttons, um, and the buttons would go inside these red lines. And the reason I'm, I'm leaning towards that is because the wheel stops cost about five thousand dollars for the amount we need to put in here. The buttons, and, and so let me backtrack a little. Rick said, well, you could just paint it out. I'm not a firm believer in that because we have so many distracted drivers. They'll just drive over paint. Not gonna stop them. So by putting a four-inch curb up, they're not gonna drive through that. They're gonna hit it and they're gonna know they hit it. So this would be optimum, but because of cost, the intermediate thing would be to put the buttons. So yes, vehicles can drive over them, but they're gonna notice that they've done that. Their wheels are gonna shake. They're gonna know that they've gone somewhere where they shouldn't be. Hopefully, they'll apply the brakes and stop before they get anywhere near the crosswalk. So for right now, I'm leaning towards the buttons. As I said, the wheel stops and, and actually, the wheel stops are four feet long. I put a gap of two feet on either end so that they wouldn't be face to face, so that I would save some money. And even with, with the savings, it still uh, require us to get, I believe, uh, ninety-six wheel stops. And it would cost us about the five thousand dollars. The buttons, the four-inch buttons, if we go with them, roughly cost about five hundred dollars. So a lot of savings. And the reason for the savings, I'll get to in a second. So the, these four-inch wheel stops are about five hundred dollars. The six-inch, which I'd like even more, are about double that. So we're looking at a thousand dollars as opposed to five thousand. And the reason I'd like to do that is shown on my next slide. So I had talked about phasing because we're using existing funds and there isn't, uh, or there is a finite amount of money. So my first proposal was to use, um, the pedestrian sign, the static sign, as well as these in pavement, uh, stop signs for pedestrians under phase one. And then the following year, when we got more money, we'd look at using either the pedestrian blinker sign or the rectangular, um, flashing beacon. Um, but with the savings, um, that we get by using the buttons as opposed to the wheel stops, we can actually do one of these, um, essentially with the savings. Now, I've been working with the, um, dealer, um, who is the largest dealer for these type systems. And there I was trying to get him to do a test project, like to give it to us for free. But of course, he wasn't willing to do that. But he's willing to give us these, uh, systems at essentially his cost. So in other words, he would not make a lot of money. So, um, if we look at these, this would be a single-sided sign. But due to MUTCD standards, we need a double sign. So it would have to have the pedestrian sign on the back as well as the arrow, as well as the flashing beacons on both sides. So, under that scenario, um, the cost he's gonna give us is roughly six thousand. And I think it's well worth the savings on the wheel stops to get these placed now rather than later. Um, they do not install them, but I am comfortable with the public work staff to be able to put them in as well as my contact through this company, which is called Tapco, is willing to come out and supervise their installation. Um, the thing about these is that they're solar. So there's no underground, um, electrical requirements. The only electrical requirements are wires coming down from the solar panel going through the rectangular flashing beacons and attaching to the push button. Now, the extremely optimum condition that I'd love to do is to have both of these on the right side. And what I mean by both of these, you put, um, the rectangular flashing beacons immediately adjacent to the crosswalk. But maybe fifty yards closer to traffic or upstream of the traffic, you put these blinkers in. They have, um, a remote control system whereby somebody pushes this. These will start flashing about two to three seconds before these will start flashing. So in that case, you have an optimum condition. You have the blinker system fifty to a hundred feet in front of these. Whereby you're warning people that the lights are flashing, something's happening, you gotta slow down. So they see this, they get the warning, then they move closer to the crosswalk. And they have these really extreme flashing LED lights at the crosswalk. So to put both of these in, and I have to do a, a good deal of research on the existing funding, this would be about eleven thousand dollars to put both of them. So one of them would be covered essentially by not putting in the wheel stops. And the other one would be additional funding that I'd have to find somewhere in our budget. Um, and then my final slide, again, because I'm not exactly sure if we're not gonna put the wheel stops in, because in my mind, again, they're ultimate. But they're more expensive, a lot more expensive. So my thought is maybe on the second phase, in the man-made medians, if you will, put some topsoil and put some plantings in there or river rock or whatever to improve the aesthetics of that situation. So again, I'm really undecided. I mean, I'd love to put in the wheel stops because that's really gonna stop vehicles from entering that area. But, um, whether or not I can find the funding to do that is another question.
How much would it be, Mark?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
How much would it be to put in the wheel stop in both signs?
Both sets of signs?
Yeah.
So it'd be eleven, eleven thousand.
But I, if I could interrupt, I think with the, uh, the, the, the wheel stops in the two signs is probably closer, it's like closer to fifteen or twenty. Just doing it in my head when you were speaking.
Well, not quite, Mr. Vice Mayor. So these rapid, uh, flashing beacons are roughly six thousand double-sided. And the wheel stops, as I stated, are about five thousand. So it's about the same as what it would be to put both of these in and and essentially the buttons, because essentially the buttons are only twenty percent of the wheel stop cost.
To do the job right, a hundred percent right, it all at the same time would cost us like eleven thousand dollars?
No, uh, if we do both of these signs, that would be eleven thousand there. And, um, Mr. Vice Mayor, to put in the wheel stops would be another five thousand. So to do it all would be about six thousand dollars. And that would not include.
Six, sixteen thousand.
Sixteen, I'm sorry, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Croyer. That would not include doing anything inside of the wheel stops.
So we do use the buttons, Mark, further south, pretty effectively.
I'm sorry, uh, Councilman Hatcher. So,
We use the white buttons to control, uh, we, to remove one, the lanes. So a noncoming, uh, lane, uh, coming in at normal.
Yeah, uh, Stagecoach and, Stagecoach and Tom Darlington, there, there's the use of buttons that effectively narrows the, uh, road down to one lane and
Yes.
Works pretty well.
aesthetically, aesthetically, it would look better than, than, uh, those, uh, stop bars there.
Yeah, I agree. That's why I'm bringing that up.
So, um, it's a little different situation here because, yes, you're correct, those, those buttons over here would do wonders. But we'd also need buttons here to make sure that vehicles don't cross over from either the left or the right into that area also.
So what would it cost to encase, uh, those areas in buttons?
So if we use four-inch diameter buttons, and these would be with reflectors in them, so that at night the headlights would reflect back to the vehicle. Um, so the four-inch ones cost about five hundred dollars. The six-inch ones, if we wanna go bigger, would be about double that.
That's five hundred dollars for that whole area, Mark?
Yes, yes, we would need, um, ninety. I'm sorry, we would need fifty-six buttons for the whole area, both sides.
Okay.
So, so Mark, um, just from a safety point of view for, for the vehicles and, and the pedestrians, what's the best solution? A button or one of these, uh, wheel stops?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. In my mind, the wheel stops would be the most effective solution because people can still drive over the buttons. They're gonna know they hit them. But if they're distracted, you know, texting or whatnot, they're may just keep going.
So for, through this project, with wheel stops and the proper signage, it costs us about sixteen thousand dollars. Or less, right?
Yes.
So I would say, I mean, we're halfway through the fiscal year already. I would think we could come up with sixteen thousand dollars and do the job right.
Well, and thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So here's the situation. These are coming and with Gary's, okay, they're coming out of the materials budget in our public works, um, budget. So the theory is to keep money in there um, in case we have an early monsoon season and we lose some pavement somewhere. You know, so our, our new budget will start July first. But if we have an early monsoon season in it, it takes out one of our roads, that's an emergency situation that needs to get fixed pretty quickly. So
Rather than, rather than, sorry, Mark, uh, rather than the material budget, why don't we look at taking it out of the capital improvement project budget? Um, for, uh, sixteen thousand dollars?
That's definitely an option. Um, I was thinking it would come out of materials, but yeah, we could definitely.
Capital improvement sounds pretty good to me. I have one question, Mark.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
We, you know, we've had people, residents come in and want to redesign our lane markings and those kind of things. And we told them, unless you're a traffic engineer, I mean, God forbid someone gets hit. I don't want the town to get sued that this isn't a, you know, full-blown traffic engineer blessed, approach. Are you a traffic engineer? Could we have Rick Engineering look for a thousand bucks? And, and say, yes, this would meet our standards?
And thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. So, um, I am not technically a traffic engineer. But I am able to read traffic reports and understand them and understand traffic plans. That being said, I did call Rick this morning and showed him this. And he, um, went over what was planned. He gave me some pointers, but he felt very comfortable with this. Now, once we get it, um, further figured out, I can send it back to him again. And, um, he actually has leftover funds because at one point we were looking at putting in hawks. And the cost for hawks are wicked expensive. And the cost to design hawks are very expensive. So in his, uh, budget, he has, um, a line item cost to review plans because we didn't put in hawks. And one of the things I neglected to state, and I wanna make sure we understand this too, whether we go with buttons or wheel stops in these areas, we have two refuge areas for pedestrians. And I would absolutely say we have to put wheel stops on either side of the crosswalks because again, buttons won't work there. So we need to have a curb set up across from the closed lanes in both directions to make sure that, uh, vehicles don't enter those areas.
How much would that cost?
Oh, again, so, um, twelve-foot lanes, we would need back-to-back wheel stops. Um, so I think there's three, six, nine, there are twelve of them, so they're fifty bucks a piece. So let me get my calculator.
Six hundred.
Six hundred dollars, yes.
I just wanna ask the question because you mentioned it at one point. These wheel stops aren't very aesthetic. So.
Correct, so they're.
Was it gonna look, you know, like the back of an envelope project? Or, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm sensitive to that. And I think everyone else is too, so.
And I appreciate that, Councilwoman Croyer. Yes, I mean, there, there, what's shown here on the right-hand side, I would recommend using the ones that have, um, reflective tape on them to be an additive thing as opposed to the, the yellow ones. And actually, they wouldn't be yellow, they'd be white because when you're, you use yellow when you're separating traffic, like if it was going down the center line. But in this case, since it's in the direction of traffic, they'd be white. And yes, they'd look just like what you see here. So you'd have a raised median built of, um, wheel stops that are four inches high. And on the interior, there would be nothing until we come back and put either topsoil and, um, low, uh, low-lying shrubs or some kind of river rock or something of that nature. So yes, that's my main concern too. I don't want to make it look any less pleasing. I want to improve the safety, no question. But again, so are the buttons an improvement over the wheel stops? I mean, I guess that's a question I have for the council.
And, and frankly, you've got me pretty confused about the whole thing and what it would end up looking like. So, I mean, I, I can't possibly approve it. And that's just me.
Okay.
I can't, I can't, I can't envision what we're actually gonna end up looking like.
Yes, so if I, if I could make a suggestion, I think Councilwoman Croyer makes a very good point. So we're gonna reconvene in, uh, next week. And maybe, Mark, if you, you could just kinda tie it all together and, and, um, show us what it looks, what it looks like and what we're being asked to approve and I think that would, that would really help.
I, I appreciate that, Mr. Vice Mayor. So, um, I understand, you know, so I don't have a CAD system here to be able to draw anything. Um, but I guess I can ask Rick to, um, take what I've shown and, and draw something on a CAD.
Yeah, I, I would say, let's do it right. Let's have Rick sign that this is a traffic engineered, approved, uh, plan. We wanna be, we want these residents passing there to be safe. As safe as we can make them.
Fair enough, Mr. Mayor, yeah.
On top of that, I, I think we need to consider the aesthetics of the approach too. So it's a balancing. You gotta reconcile both those and, and make sure we present the best, best picture for, for the town and, and the local residents there. So I, I think it warrants kind of a reevaluation of, of this. And, um, you know, if we have to spend more in design and, and, uh, uh, coming up with a better solution, then, then so be it. At the end of the day, we want it safe, but we want it to look good as well too. So, um, those are two objectives that I think, uh, need to be addressed.
Fair enough, Gary. Um, yeah, I can, I can understand.
Okay, we'll put this on, on an agenda for a meeting a week from tonight.
Well, and, and, yeah, hopefully they can get it addressed a week from tonight. If not, we'll have to put it on a future.
Okay.
Meeting, so.
Ho- hopefully we can, Mark, because I know these people would really like to, uh, get going here.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Steve, th- these are approval of street closures for Thunderbird Artists. You can sit here if you like.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, um. It, so yeah, obviously, we, you know, the Thunderbird Artists have been our signature event for going on now, almost thirty, I think thirty years. And, uh, and so when we did the approval for this last fall, uh, we only approved for the one show, we wanted to kind of evaluate. Um, as we kinda headed into the future, I think partly, you know, kinda seeing where COVID was headed, partly seeing, you know, um, how some of the changes they've done as reflects being able to provide alcohol inside the, the show, how that would be worked, um, this year. And, and I will tell you that, you know, my observation and, you know, and those who attended, that the show went very well. I talked to many of the businesses in the area and they were happy with how things were done. Um, they put in where the stars are, access points to the gardens and kept the alcohol part out of the gardens and kept it into the show space. And so that way, the gardens were accessible, um, twenty-four seven by our residents, and they could walk freely through and utilize those gardens in the way that they normally do. Um, and the other thing that we talked about was Spanish Village. Uh, Spanish Village originally hadn't allowed approval for last show, all of all these spaces. And talking with some of their tenants, you know, they liked having this access point here, but because this parking originally was not, was that included in that? We created a barrier that actually extended here so we could do two-turn, uh, a two-car movement, uh, in this particular area. So it really kinda limited the space that the Thunderbirds had. And, and in talking with the management company and then getting a, a, an agreement between Thunderbirds and the management company for Spanish Village, um, they, we've decided to just maintain the ADA spaces here. And so the show will now kind of include this area here and then will not obstruct Grace Renee, uh, gallery. So they'll, they'll get this space back that they lost. I just wanted to say, so that, as we look at the details of what we're approving, um, the red will be excluded, but we'll include this area as part of that. Um, and again, these are the dates. The, the road closures start at five PM on Thursday, uh, before the show for setup, and then it ends at five PM on the Sunday. And then as usual, I will send, you know, out all notices, uh, at least two, if not three notices on how to access the post office during that timeframe. Um, and I will tell you that the Thunderbirds did a really good job at, at making sure that traffic and parking and those where people can and can't park. They had a posted officer as usual in the post office, and, you know, I've took pictures of it and, and, and they were doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing. And I think the show is heading in the direction that, you know, we wanna see that head, uh, as we move forward. And so I recommend approval, uh, for both shows at this point, um, at this, so. Prove that, if there's any questions?
Good, uh, and I assume that's subject to, God forbid, COVID flare-up, um, state, et cetera, at the end, but, uh.
And, and these approvals are always subject, and I think it's in their, their report, as subject to whatever COVID requirements there are um, that in place, and then we'll make sure that we jump through those hoops.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Yes, Steve, this is John. Uh, one comment. So, uh, in March, for the March seventeen through twenty program, the Hampton Inn will be open, uh, for that. Uh, January, uh, most likely not. So my concern is signage for folks who are coming up Tom Darlington, they, so they can find their way into the hotel. It's, uh, um, it's, it can be pretty confusing, and especially my, my guess is those staying at the hotels, they're probably very likely to be doing their first trip to care for. So can we ask, um, Thunderbirds to, to, uh, come up with some signage during the road closure period to help direct people to the hotel, at least coming northbound on Tom Darlington?
Wes McCran, I, I think that's reasonable. We can ask them. And in the past, when we've asked for various different signs, um, at that location, whether it's to move traffic or, you know, no, no event parking signs, they've been immutable to that. So that's something that we can work with them on, and I don't think it's gonna be an issue.
Okay, yeah, please do. I think that's, that's really important. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Hearing done, uh, Candace, would you please do a roll call, or is there anyone who would make a motion to approve?
You know, at this time of night, I'll approve anything. So, um, yes, let's, I, I make a motion to approve with the cat, with the caveat that in the March show, um, we asked them to make signage to, to get people to the Hampton Inn.
I'll second.
Okay, based, motions are made and seconded. Candace, would you please do a roll call?
Yes, Mayor and Council, uh, Councilmember Geiger, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatcher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Croyer, how do you vote?
Um, I think I'll vote yes.
Councilmember Delicio, how do you vote?
I think we've lost him.
Councilmember Delicio, are you-
Sorry, I'm, I'm, I apologize. I'm here, I was trying to find the unmute here, and, uh, I vote aye.
I thought so, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Vice Mayor Crane, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson, how do you vote?
Aye.
That's six to zero with one out of it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to item number twelve, I'm gonna make a suggestion. This is to go into executive session, which is updating on a number of important matters. We're gonna be meeting in a week. And I just expect those meetings to be significantly shorter. So I'm going to suggest that we do not do the executive session. Mr. Wright, how would we do that? Just cancel that for tonight?
Just reschedule it.
Reschedule it for next week. Would anyone be opposed to that? Please say aye. No one has said anything, so we'll move to item thirteen, adjournment. We're adjourned. Thank you all.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night.